Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Tuesday, February 1st, 2020. And I now call the meeting to order. Now's the time for the National Anthem and Pledge of Allegiance. If all council will please mute your microphones, if you wish, you don't have to, we can hear you too. And then we'll play the National Anthem by the Costa Mesa High School Madrigal Choir. After that, we're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Harland.
Thank you. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was beautiful, the Madrigal Choir, and great job, too, on the pledge, Councilmember Harland. Now is the time for a moment of solemn expression. Tonight will be led by Pastor David Mann from Calvary Chapel. Ms. Green, would you please take Pastor Mann off mute and allow him to lead us in a moment of solemn expression?
Thank you so very much for tonight, and it's a pleasure to be with you once again. And Father, we just come before you now in our time of meeting tonight and matters that are going to be before us and decisions made. We do pray and ask for your blessing upon the mayor, upon the entire City Council, Lord, that is present. And, Lord, we ask that you would bless and watch over the Fire Department Chief and all of his staff, the police chief, his entire working staff, Lord, in protection and taking care of the city. We pray, Lord, for the city clerks, and we pray, Father, for the city attorney, the entire city staff, Lord, we think of all of them from day to day, from week to week, as this New Year has already begun. Lord, the things, Father, that you would just guide us and direct us through this evening, but also, Lord, in the weeks and months ahead as well. We need your help. We need your guidance and wisdom. And so we just commit this night to you and all the things, Lord, that will be discussed. Lead us, Lord, with unity. Bless the entire city of Costa Mesa and all of its residents, Lord, and those that border us. Be with them, too. Keep us healthy. Keep us strong as we go into this new year. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor.
Yeah, so good to see you again. God bless you.
Great to see. Well, I can't see you, but I can hear you. Great to hear you. Okay, so now, Madam Clerk, would you please do the voice roll call?
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Gamaros.
Present.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Harper.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Potemar.
Here.
Mayor Stevens.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Madam City Attorney, Ms. Barlow, do you have any report coming out of our closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Direction was given during closed session, but no reportable action was taken this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first is a Lunar New Year presentation for the Year of the Tiger, the Year of the Tiger. To all those celebrating the Lunar New Year, we wish you all a very happy and prosperous year. This is, the Lunar New Year is a 15-day-long festival filled with reunions among family and friends with an abundance of delicious food and wishes for a new year filled with happiness, prosperity, and good fortune. As the Year of the Ox, which we're just, we're just leaving the Year of the Ox, makes way for the Year of the Tiger, it is an ideal time to look ahead to the future and the challenges and opportunities that 2022 will bring us. We've done a proclamation for the Year of the Tiger, the Lunar New Year, and I'll just read a few excerpts of it. The Year of the Tiger officially begins today, February 1st, 2022, and ends on January 21st, 2023. The tiger is a symbol of strength, independence, and bravery. Lunar New Year is celebrated by millions of Asian communities across the world. I urge everyone in Costa Mesa to recognize and celebrate this special day and this special time of the year for those celebrating the Lunar New Year. So that's, that's number one. And number two is the proclamation for Black History Month 2022, which is focused this year on health and wellness. February 2022 is Black History Month. This month, we celebrate the historical contributions and achievements of, of Black Americans. This year, Black History the Month has the theme that focuses on the importance of Black health and wellness. This month-long observance provides a fresh reminder to examine where systemic racism persists in an American health, in American healthcare, and gives visibility to the people and organizations creating change. We've also done a proclamation for Black History Month, and I'm going to read a brief excerpt of that proclamation. Black History Month started in 1926, when distinguished Black author and American historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson launched Negro Week to celebrate the achievements of Black Americans and other peoples of African descent. Dr. Woodson chose the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. By 1976, President Gerald Ford officially recognized the month of February as Black History Month. Today, Black History Month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the vital teachings of Black Americans and to focus on the progress and richness of Black American achievements. On behalf of the City of Costa Mesa, I proclaim the month of February as Black History Month and encourage all Costa Mesa residents to join in this observance. So those are the two proclamations and presentations. Now, we're going to open up to public comment. Public comment will be heard at this time. The public comments must be on items that are not on the agenda, not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to items that are on the agenda, you have to wait till those items are called. Everybody will have up to three minutes. You don't have to take the three minutes, but up to three minutes. At 30 seconds, so two minutes and 30 seconds, you'll get a voice cue to wrap it up by our clerk, Brenda Green. At that point, when it gets to three minutes, your mic will be cut off. If you wish to speak, use your raise hand function on Zoom or press star nine. And when we call on you, either unmute yourself or press star six, and then you can start your public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who wishes to speak at public comment?
Yes, our first speaker is Jimmy Bavard.
Jimmy, Bavard, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. I meant to give this public comment two weeks ago, but shut up to City Council Chambers and realized that the meeting had moved online. But, so, I manage my family's business, which is located on 19th Street. And in the afternoon of January 3rd, we had, one of our clients became aggressive, and we were able to have him leave our business. But he returned about 30 minutes later with a stolen sign and tried to bash in the storefront window. And at this point, we called the Police Department. But when the officer showed up, the individual was gone. The officer said that they were aware of the individual causing other problems along 19th, that they'd be looking for him. Couple hours later, I decided to call the Police Department to see whether or not the individual had been apprehended, as we were afraid that he might come back. And I was told by somebody at Police Records that according to the officer's notes, the responding officer's notes, he had written in his notes that he had spoken to the aggressive individual and that he had complied and left, which didn't happen in reality. And I then called Police Dispatch about 10 minutes later, and they said that according to their notes, police had looked for the individual but hadn't found him. Honestly, I'm just disappointed by this lack of honesty of the officer who responded. And luckily, we had no problems with the individual returning, but it's just a bit disconspirating. And as a public servant myself, I understand the importance of serving the public with fairness and justice and equity and taking every call, whether small or big, seriously. And so I would hope that the City Council would make sure that our police officers and all other public servants are serving with the highest degree of integrity and the utmost sense of fairness. So I have written a memo for anybody that'd like to read it with more precise details and names, times, to the individuals I spoke to. But that's, I'd like to say today, thank you. And also, a thank you to Manuel Chavez for taking care of another issue regarding trade winds in Woburn Park, Councilman Chavez and staff. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Who's next, Madam Clerk, for public comment?
Call in user one, please.
Call in user one, you have the floor.
Our children are in school five days a week, eight to nine hours a day. Our court system is seating juries. Our public transportation is operational. However, our city hall is once again closed. And most importantly, our city council, who meets twice a month, has canceled in-person participation at a time where major issues are being agendized and discussed. This is really disappointing for this council to so easily dismiss the residents. Not being in the council is a grave disservice to the residents. You don't have the option of picking up a paper agenda, to have all of the accompanying documents, to be able to hear in person and to comment after you hear certain discussions, rather than being a disembodied voice over the phone. I hope you reconsider and go back to an in-person council. Others have done it. We can do it. We've done it before. On another issue, Sacramento is also dismissing the will of the people. I'd like to remind all who are listening that local zoning issues being proposed by Sacramento would dismiss and juxtaposition all residential housing in every city in the state. An initiative, again, by the people of California, is pushing back. This initiative is a statewide initiative and can be signed by anybody that is a registered voter within the state of California. If you want to sign this petition or carry a petition in your area, go to ourneighborhoodvoices.com. Again, ourneighborhoodvoices.com. This is Costa Mesa's future. Don't complain when it's too late. Do something now.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Kim Hendricks, please.
Ms. Hendricks, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council. And I would like to thank the City of Costa Mesa for allowing Fairview Park Alliance to help them in their second Saturday of the month restoration in Fairview Park. I love meeting so many people out there in our community who really care about Fairview Park. And everyone voices that they want good stewardship, and they want a long-term vision and an overall restoration plan for Fairview Park, like the experts said at the June 2018 Steering Committee meeting. A lot is in a name. Perhaps Fairview Nature Park would be better. I saw a gentleman flying a drone a couple of weekends ago because the signage is still up, talking about drones. He had no idea until I told him, and he understood completely. And, and he wanted to help the wildlife there. So I think it really is, would be good if the city could, you show a little bit more effort, I'm sorry to say. It's not that I'm not grateful for what you're doing, but maybe show a little bit more effort with removing moving signage that is misleading to the public about flying drones and having the Harbor Soaring Society's kiosks up and their storage shed in the Vernal Pool Six watershed. Really, the community is ready to step up. And actually, I've talked to a lot of people who are frustrated, too, who voted for Measure AA, who feel that the city is dragging their feet. In 2018, there was a cement truck out there drilling holes in cement, and that had to be removed. There is no overall restoration plan. And I hope we get some experts in the fields, okay? Because just being a biologist doesn't mean that you understand native habitats. Grassland Restoration Land IQ has been very successful with grassland restorations, which are one of the hardest to restore. The Catalina Island Conservancy has been successful in restoring their grasslands, which supposedly, they were told that couldn't be done. It's been seven years. Our earth is suffering incredibly right now. And it's local lawmakers like you who can take in this information and make good decisions for the whole community. I hope you guys get out to Fairview Park. I hope you guys take a walk in nature and get away from your computers and your jobs and see how beneficial it is. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Wendy List, please.
Yes, good evening, members of the City Council and Mr. Mayor. The subject I want to talk about is public safety on the West Side on 19th Street. The elderly lady who lives at the Bethel Towers and was kind of sideswiped, she was crossing the street at Pomona and 19th on her way back from the senior center. She's spent the last two months in convalescent homes and was going to be returning this week. So that's the good news. She's frail. She's in her late 90s, grew up in Warsaw when Poland was invaded. And she still is a great Costa Mason and contributes to our community. That being said, I really would like to see an effort to slow down the speeders on 19th Street and on Whittier and on 17th, too. But it's more, they go down 19th, and then they go down Whittier all the way to 17th. So please, whatever it takes to do some traffic calming or give some tickets, I think it's really necessary and not to be put on the back burner. Another safety issue, and as Ms. Hendricks was talking about, Fairview Park, I've talked to several people, and I know you're going to be discussing the contract with Endemic, but a safety issue is that people don't want to go down the paths to the river channel, to the drainage channel, because the, the, all the trees, it's too thick. And, and there's a fear that the homeless are in there. And it is, I've walked down there several times, and it is kind of scary if you're by yourself, even if you have your dogs. So I don't know under which consultant or whoever does, if the city does the trimming, but I think that that is a safety issue and that people would go out to Fairview Park more and go on those paths if it was safer. And even if the park ranger made some stops down there to ferret out people who are living there, just to make that experience in Fairview Park something that is enjoyable. And we all need to get out and enjoy the fresh air and nature more. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Mark Vukovich, please.
Mr. Vukovich.
Good evening, Council. I wanted to speak on a couple of subjects tonight. One is, I wanted to acknowledge that within the past two weeks, that there has been a second traffic death of a pedestrian in Costa Mesa, sorry, a third within the past month. So another one within the past two weeks since the last City Council meeting, which was on Newport Boulevard and Industrial Way. And just the tragedy that that is, and, you know, the ongoing tragedy of traffic violence within our cities. And so I want to advocate and look forward to Council at some point of adopting a vision to your plan, and that would be my goal. I also wanted to talk about, yeah, housing and the process of, you know, looking at the housing element. And I just want to appreciate the process that's been done by the city and the good work that's been done. Yeah, I really, I really appreciate all of that. And I would just encourage any one of you and any, any citizen who's, who's listening in, yeah, not to waste their time to sign really petitions that are going to make housing worse in California. So, yeah, and the last thing I want to say is, I just wanted to appreciate the, what I thought was the prudent decision to go onto Zoom for these past two sessions or three sessions. I don't think, personally, I don't think it should continue for too much longer, but I think it was prudent at the time. And I, and I really respect the decision and the courage to do that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers?
No, Mr. Mayor, no further speakers.
Okay. Thank you, all the speakers. And we'll close public comment. Now is the time for council members to give their committee reports, comments, and suggestions in like four minutes or less. So first up, from District Four, is Councilmember Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, everyone that's joining us today. I see we have a long list of people watching, which probably means a longer discussion on a couple of items today. First and foremost, to everyone that celebrates, Happy Lunar New Year. As you may know, it's, as we said, in Costa Mesa, we actually host the Tet Fest for Lunar New Year. That'll be happening this weekend at the OC Fairgrounds. So if you want to stop by, enjoy some good cuisine, see some good shows, and just have a good fun time with your family, in a nice, culturally experienced way, go down Saturday from 10 to 10, or Sunday from 10 to 9. It'll be great. Furthermore, off to the point, Mr. Bavard, thank you to staff for addressing the unfortunate situation of the management trade winds not cleaning up properly as a sewage bill. It's unfortunate that sometimes we have to go, just directly to address these issues with the park, but I always appreciate staff for doing that. And it was Jimmy for letting us know when issues are happening in that community. It's very important to me that everyone in Costa Mesa has the same access to a nice quality of life. Finally, when it comes to speeding, I, too, am curious about what we can do to alleviate speeding, particularly in my district, as those streets, 17th Street, 19th Street, and Wilson are in my district. I am really appreciative of staff's trial run on Meyer with the billiards and roundabouts. I am excited to see if we can translate that to other streets. But it's a challenge for us to see how we can better address speeding on bared thoroughways. I know Wilson primarily is used as a cutoff or a shortcut from Ratorius Street, because they're parallel streets that go to the same place. So perhaps we could have some studies done on speeding in those streets and see what we can do to alleviate traffic. I know, personally speaking, it's really nice when you have, like, bikers are protected, and it's really nice when we have comming measures, so we see do work, like on Meyer Streets, we have some ideas to put out there for staff. And with that, those are my comments. So thanks, everyone, for coming today, and hope you all enjoy the meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember, very much. So next up from District Two is Councilmember Lauren Gamaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly announce that baseball season is starting in our community, and youth sports is something we should all pay attention to and support. We have Little League Baseball and Pony starting. And if you want something fun to do and have a great way to recreate with your family, come out and join our youth sports programs and watch and participate any way you can. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Great job. So next up, from District Six on the East Side, Councilmember Jeffrey Harland.
I have no comments tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Wow, good. That's good and concise. From District One, Councilmember Donald Harper.
Thank you, John. I just want to update you on the, the security camera system. We investigated as a neighborhood, and I shared it with Chief Lawrence. And the neighbor, our neighbors were just adamant to have something, and so we can be kind of a pilot program for the city, maybe. We did a demo, and we had about half the, half the neighbors participate in the demo. And then when we asked everyone to pay for it, I assumed we wouldn't get 100% participation, but we did, in fact, get 28 out of 28 households that wanted to fund the program. It's about $2,400 a year. It's a camera that records license plates, identifies cars. So if you have an event or problem, you can give to the Police Department the information and the license plate number, which I know is helpful. I'm putting on the city manager and our chief of police to at least do a quality demo, do some quality research, make sure we made a good decision. You know, I don't know how to get a decision we made about the camera we selected, but the data we got was that it significantly reduced crime, and it was a deterrent, and it seems very cost-effective and a very good piece of technology to support our city. So I'll keep, I'll keep politely updating all of you about it, if it's okay. And I want to, also want to say, I was encouraged by the Rams 49ers game, where I saw a whole crowd not wearing masks. I think based on that, maybe the pandemic is near the end. So I thought that was very exciting, very fun to see. And I know Denver has released, given up on their mask mandates and their, their, their mask and their vaccine mandates, and it's, because they're seeing data that indicates that the COVID virus is running out of steam. And so I just want to posit and note that's true, and wish everybody the best and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Okay, next up from District Five, Councilmember Arliss.
Okay, thank you. Just a few items. I did want to thank the Fairview Park Alliance for the work they're doing at Fairview Park, just kind of engaging and sustaining a group of volunteers that I know will be very helpful as we continue the restoration efforts. So thank you to FPA for keeping that going, and thank you to staff for supporting them in those efforts. I think we mentioned in the last meeting, where we also heard that there was a need for improved signage or updated signage. Maybe we could use FPA volunteers or committee volunteers or even parks commissioners to help update some of that signage. I know we have the kiosk at Fairview Park that can get a little outdated, too. And that's a, should be in And that's a should be an easy update process. Bike Walk Committee has a meeting tomorrow at four where they're reviewing CIP projects for the next budget year. So everyone interested in in safe streets and traffic calming and slowing speeds, it's a good opportunity to see what's being considered and share input on prioritizing the CIP projects. I think I say this every meeting for the last three years. But slow speeds, slowing cars on our roads, making our roads safer for all road users. A huge priority. It continues to be the most common feedback I get from community members. So I'm happy to see the momentum we've built here. And and there continues to be need on on all the streets mentioned today, Nineteenth Street, Victoria, Whittier, Wilson. On that topic, there was some really exciting news from the U.S. Department of Transportation this this week, some really good positive movement in the leadership there and and sort of affirmation of of the urgency of roadway safety. Trends have have been going up in terms of deaths on our roads and I think it was the first sort of recognition that collisions on our roadways are preventable. And I really appreciate that now at the national level, the philosophy is turning to say, okay, if collisions on our roadways are preventable, they they should be unacceptable and and we need to stop sort of dismissing roadway deaths as as sort of natural casualties of our system. So I'm really excited about that turn and I hope that that change in direction at the highest level trickles down into some of roadway policies that that we have to abide by. Last topic on on road safety, we've had some really good developments in safe streets work for schools. The Orange County Healthcare Agency has a grant that where they're funding some safe streets education with schools. And four Costa Mesa schools are currently enrolled in the program. So I'm really excited about this. It aligns well with our goals as a council and I I hope this has worked well. While we don't have to pay for it, we don't have to be involved in it. I certainly hope that we support and celebrate it. The schools that are currently enrolled are Pomona, Whittier, Wilson and Sonora. So keep keep an eye out for that and let's applaud those efforts at the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is from District Three, our Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Marr.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I wanted to follow up on Mr. Bevar's comment and hoping the chief can look into his concern and maybe give us a quick update when he gets a chance. Agree, the signage in the fairview should be relatively easy fix. So it'd be good for us to get that taken care of, seen around them later. I just Googled Denver and specifically it's the mask mandate for indoor businesses that was lifted. It still exists for schools, daycare, as public transportation. I had half of my sales team out at any given time in January. My parents lost a dear friend last weekend. So I think that the pandemic is very much still going for for some parts of our communities. I am participating, it's called the Tajji 100. So this is an event started at Camp Tajji in in Iraq in 2003 by soldiers stationed overseas, trying to figure out what to do with all of their free time and stay fit. And so it became a challenge to run or walk 100 miles in February. And so now a lot of members of the veteran community through Team Red, White and Blue still participate in this idea. So I will be running or walking 100 miles in February. If you want to meet with me, it will likely be a moving meeting. So I can try to get miles in. And I know at least one member of city staff is participating. If anyone's interested, contact me. You don't have to be a veteran. It's just kind of a fun thing that we're doing. Reached out to a few folks who I think, you know, were veterans who haven't really participated in some of the veterans community stuff and trying to bring them into the fold. This is a good way to do it. So please share that with anybody. It's called the Tajji 100, T A G, T A J I 100. And you can Google it and I'm happy to chat with anybody about it and invite them on a hike, walk, run in February. And then I also wanted to give my condolences to the city manager and her husband. They they lost a friend and a guy named Abe Jenkins. He was a civil rights activist and community leader in Charleston, South Carolina. I actually had the pleasure of meeting him about 10 years ago and and working with him on the Obama campaign in 2008. It was the primary in South Carolina, actually. So incredible man had done some really wonderful things in the community and, you know, please, please give Reggie a hug for me because I know that was a huge loss. And then also for the mayor. So, you know, I don't want to announce your public news in any way, John, but I'm big hugs. I know you suffered a big loss last week as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. So, yeah, in terms of my comments, that the Ted Festival in on on Saturday and Sunday and and Councilmember Chavez hit the high points. It's from 10 o'clock. It's at the fairgrounds. It's from 10 o'clock to 10 o'clock on Saturday and 10 o'clock to nine o'clock on Sunday. It's it's really quite something. And if you're looking for a time to go at one o'clock, they have their opening ceremonies and it's very spectacular. There's a lot of color and a lot of great talent and beautiful sounds and you'll really get a feel for the holiday. And it's put on by the Union of Vietnamese Students Association, which is based right here in Garden Grove. And so it's quite a quite an event. So I encourage you all to go. We lost another member of of our our community, a man by the name of Dave Gardner, who many of you know. He was in his 90s. He was one of the very first reserve police officers in the state of, sorry, in the city of Costa Mesa. He was also the president of our Historical Society and a member of our Historical Preservation Committee. And so he's one of the people we're going to recognize and adjourn the meeting on behalf of at the end of the meeting, Dave Gardner. And then as it's okay, it's public. You didn't you didn't speak out of school. My mother passed away on Friday. She's 90, Mary Ann Stevens, she's 90, was 97 years old when she died. She was a terrific mother. And I'd just like to thank the council and everybody on staff and everybody who has expressed condolences to me. Also, Facebook, people on Facebook, people have texted me. It's like the only legitimate thing, one of the only legitimate uses of Facebook is to console somebody when their parent or loved one dies. So I appreciate all that outreach and I, you know, I it's I only have three and a half minutes or something like that. I could never sum up my mom in that time, but she was a terrific mother. And even though, you know, she lived all those years, it's sorry to see her go. So anyway, thank you, everybody.
Can we adjourn the meeting for her as well, please?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. She's one of the three. So we're going to Abe Jenkins, Mary Ann Stevens and Dave and Dave Gardner. And unless somebody else wants to include anyone else. And also, yes, condolences to Reggie Harrison and Loriann for the loss of of Abe Jenkins, who who was, you should Google him. He was a very prominent person in 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 South Carolina who did a lot of good in civil rights in that part of the country. Anyway, so with that, we have our city manager report, Ms. Farrell Harrison.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. I'm feeling very emotional right now. Thank you for expressing your condolences. I'm sorry for your loss as well, John. I can only imagine how amazing your mom must have been to have raised somebody with as much of humor and intelligence and kindness and warmth as you. I just I'm so overwhelmed to work for a council like this. That's just so human and so empathetic and real. So I'm sorry for your loss, John, on behalf of me and Reggie and the whole leadership team. We're really sorry for your loss. And thank you for mentioning Abe Jenkins. You know, you mentioned the proclamation earlier and you read about Black History Month and, you know, sometimes, you know, people will ask, you know, why is that important? And this is one of the reasons why I came to Costa Mesa, quite frankly. Because we recognize that not everyone's contributions to the country are always as prominently explained or written or in our history books. And, you know, my husband and Abe went back a long way and a lot of why we're so hurt and the loss is so big is because of the work that they did as high school students in 1973 to when their schools were desegregated, just being able to have the same benefits as the other high school football players. They were football players and they they could work at the local pool hall. They could rack the balls. They could wait on the tables. They could clean the tables. They could work in the kitchen and they could wash the dishes, but they couldn't eat inside. And this is nine years after the Civil Rights Act was passed. And South Carolina just refused to desegregate. And so they led a boycott and it was very dangerous at that time to do so, of course. But you think of these things and our son Ian is the first one. And that lineage of Reggie's lineage going back eight generations, the first one in our family to be born with the same rights as every other American citizen. And Ian's only 17. So these issues aren't 400 years old. They're not millennia years old. We have a son who's the first one in our family in the Harrison line to actually have the same rights as every other American citizen. And his father wasn't born into that. It wasn't until he was well past high school that he had the same rights as another person in South Carolina. And so these issues are real. Thank you for recognizing Black History Month. It means a lot to me. And I'm just overwhelmed with your kindness and just acknowledging that. So thank you for that. I did have a couple of other updates. The our redistricting process is underway. Next month, you're going to make a very important decision on that. And you'll be choosing the final maps at the next meeting. And so we encourage, continue to encourage members of the public to get involved and help in that selection. I wanted to thank the city clerk's office for all of their great work on that and all of the public meetings and workshops to get input onto the process. And so thank you for that. That'll be an important decision and we'll be living with that decision for the next 10 years. And so we're really thankful for everybody who's participated in that work. I did want to respond to some of the comments that we've heard tonight related to COVID and the surge and us being by appointment only. So just to make sure that we're all clear and there's no misinformation. City Hall is not closed. It is by appointment only. Many businesses have gone to that format, some doctors' offices, other establishments have gone to that where it's by appointment only. You wait in your car and you get buzzed in just to reduce the spread. I'll share that for the month of January, we had 100 employees test positive. Just to put that in perspective, in the entire year of 2021, all 12 months combined, we only had 108 COVID positives. So in one month, the first month of this year, we've managed to almost match the total number of COVID positives that we had last year. So as you can imagine, it's an impact on on the staff and the productivity. And so we're continuing to serve the public and we continue to do it by appointment and we will until we can get employees back safely into their stations and continue the great work that you've tasked us to do. But at this point, we really need to continue to do the by appointment only in City Hall, just to make sure that we're keeping everybody as safe as we possibly can and allowing people the chance to recover or to test negative and come back. And so that work still continues. In terms of neighborhood improvement, I just wanted to give an update and a shout out to our Neighborhood Improvement Task Force that's led by Susan Price. We continue to work with our local motel operators to address safety, code enforcement issues, nuisance abatement, calls for service and all of the challenges that can come with our public safety staff having to go out on multiple calls when it comes to certain locations throughout the city. We're happy that on January 28th, and we're pleased to report that the proposal that we brought forward to you that you approved for a home key project for the Motel Six on Newport Boulevard has been submitted to the state. And so we're super excited about that. If that does move forward and it's approved by the state and they'll provide funding for that, we'll have additional permanent supportive housing for seniors, veterans and other populations that are at risk of homelessness. And so that's that's awesome. And then on some of the other comments that we heard from the community, I wanted to stress, so for our planning commissioner, Jimmy Bevar, I have not seen that email or that memo. I'll be looking forward to seeing that, to follow up on that, as is our chief. He also shared that he has not seen that yet. So we'll be looking for that. We will absolutely be following up on that. Thank you to Councilmember Harper for making the suggestion on the citywide camera systems. I am working with the chief to look at some demos and which camera systems would lend themselves best to deploy throughout the city, hopefully, and we'll look for funding opportunities to do that. We will absolutely look at the signage at Fairview Park. I already communicated with our Parks and Community Services Director on that to handle that as expeditiously as possible. And then last but not least, I, we will for Ms. Lee's comment on the paths and the the brush there. I'm making sure that it's clear. We'll look into that and see if there are any additional actions that we need to take. And on ATP actions, we're glad to have a new ATP coordinator in Public Services that's going to work with Rajah and his team and also with me to see what other improvements we can bring forth faster to slow down speeds and protect pedestrians and any and also folks that are on bikes, just to make sure that our streets are are safe. And so we are going to step up those efforts and and do some more interim projects, much like the one on Meyer, to make sure that we can do some some demos and some temporary projects while we build out the more permanent projects. Because we definitely want to make sure that that everyone's safe. So thanks. Those were all the comments that I had for tonight. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Next up, we have our city attorney report. Ms. Barlow, do you have a report?
I have nothing to report this evening, Mr. Mayor, but I did want to extend condolences to you on behalf of my entire office for the loss of your mother. It's a terrible, terrible loss and I don't know how anyone ever survives it, but I guess we all do at some point. And also to Loriann and Reggie, condolences on your loss. It is person who stands next to you as a young person in high school especially, to stand up for your rights to to start making your way in the world as an adult and and I have some friends like that and to lose someone like that is very, very hard. So our condolences. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Barlow. Okay, so we've got the consent calendar item. I'd like to note right up front that Councilmember Gamarros, we're going to note him as a an abstention from item number three, the warrant register, because his wife works at Priceless Pets. We have one item that I have in my notes here that's going to be pulled, which is consent calendar item number five, which Councilmember Chavez has asked us to pull. Other than those two notes, Ms. Madam Clerk, is there anyone either from the public or the council that wishes to pull any other items?
No, Mr. Mayor, I've not been notified of any others.
Okay, now, so this is the, it's, we're going to do this, it's, these consent calendar items are considered routine and they're done in one motion. So apart from the abstention of Councilmember Gamarros and number five, do we have a motion? Councilmember Chavez?
Move to approve consent calendar.
Okay, the balance of that and then and then any any second. Second by Mayor Pro Tem Marr. Good, let's call for the question on the balance.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Harland?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamarros?
The exception of Priceless Pets, yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Marr?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, now on consent calendar number five, Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
This is the citywide Parkway Maintenance Street Rehabilitation and Slurry Steel Project, City Project Number 21-03. Mr. Seth Ronan, Public Services Director.
Okay, so we're going to have a presentation by by Mr.
Oh, I'm not quite sure.
Why don't we start, why don't we start with the Councilmember Manuel who pulled it? You you can engineer how. Um why don't we start, why don't we start with the council member, Madewell, who pulled it? You you can engineer how we want it, how you want to handle it.
Yes, I I know our public forum is very thorough, like presentations, but I actually want to be very simple with this one. I just wanted to pull the item. To thank your staff for always doing a great job on Slurry Seals. As you guys know, it's one of my biggest priorities, my rep, my rep for council. And it's always nice seeing our work, our post department really investment committee and make sure we have great quality roads. Um real and really the intent of pulling this item apart from that, which has one simple question to you, um to the Ramen, which is. Um last council meeting, I mentioned the idea of doing some form of protected bike lane all the way down um. Plus to Boulevard. And I was wondering if any headway on that, um in turn.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chavez, uh which street, are you laughing, prefer to placenta or? Placenta. Uh yeah, the staff is actually working on a striping plan for placenta to install buffered bike lanes all the way. Uh from Adams to the city limits on the south side. Um and we'll be working with our bike committee to 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 complete that 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 work. And and once that's done, that will be the striking that will be installed as part of this project.
Perfect, thank you. And then um just of curiosity, alongside the striping, would it be possible to also look into doing some kind of. Protracted bike bike lane along that, that's driving?
Yes, I mean, the 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 idea is to to do buffered bike lanes. We'll see how much uh we can do in terms of whether we can uh. You know, put markers, maybe we'll do it. Some could, some critical areas, we might do actually add more. Protection like 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 the markers that you see on on Merimac. Um because it's such a long stretch, uh you know, we have to see how best to get that down.
Perfect. And actually, again, I appreciate you guys being so thorough and knowing what parts of the streets can have more and less. So that's great. And thank you so much, Rancho, my brief question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, uh uh Councilmember Chavez. Uh um Councilmember uh Reynolds has her hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. Um uh because this was was pulled, I was hoping we could maybe cover a little bit more of our conversation, Mr. Seth the Ramen. Um I lost you on the, there you are. Uh so we we talked about this um Slurry Seal Project, right, covers. What is it? North of Wilson and south of Eighteenth. Um the full stretch of Placentia in between those is is uh sort of prime. Uh walking, biking, skating, scooting corridors for students going to Wilson and Estancia High School. Um possibly crossing for Victorian Pomona. Um and you had described a uh a plan that staff had to kind of. Uh uh fold another element of this project so that we can cover all of Placentia. Can you just share um with council and and folks um from our community what that plan was?
Yes, um so the the actually the way it's it's proposed, the project is advertised and 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 what you're seeing right now is. We're working on placenta from from Adams to Wilson and from Eighteenth to the south. So the section in the middle was, there's no need for any uh road they work because of the the payment condition is 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 in good shape. But what we are doing is we are working on a striping plan for the entire placenta from from uh from Adams all the way to the south. So as part of that, so what I what we will end up doing is uh will will either, you know, go through a change order process or somehow. Will add that segment in between to remove the striping, slurry, and then put the new striping with bike lanes. So we'll have the entire stretch of placenta will look the same.
So I uh thank you for that description. I just wanted to acknowledge um uh that I I really appreciate, you know, that we're using this. Um Slurry Seal Project that's sort of in our schedule as part of our normal pavement condition um index improvements to actually accelerate. Right, a future improvement um for bike lanes that are on our active transportation plan. So. Uh I know this came up last year and I'm I was really excited to hear of the plan that that you guys had in place for that. And I think it's um. Both great for our our road safety goals and also great for our bottom line because it does in improve some efficiencies and and overall costs. So so thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of the other council members have any questions or wish to be heard on this mi- matter? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand. So um let's, oh, sorry, uh Councilmember Chavez, did you have something else?
Yeah, just to move to prove the item.
Well, we got, I think now we have to open it up to public comment. Okay, let's open it up to public comment. Uh Madam Clerk, is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item from the public?
Yes, Mr. Martinez, please.
Mr. Martinez, you have the floor.
Uh thank you. Yes, I just wanted to comment that I appreciate that the plan for all of Placentia is a buffered bike lane. I know that in the ATP, it's a class four up to the park entrance, and after that, it's a class two. I just want to make sure that um the buffer actually has bollards like it does on Merrimack. I think that that would just be so much better. And even though it is a slight deviation from the active transportation plan. I think that that is worth it. We definitely should be increasing our protection for cyclists on that street. Uh even if it's just for that portion from Adams to Wilson and from Eighteenth to Sixteenth. Uh just as an example of how successful it can be, you just need to look at pictures from concerts in the park. Uh over the summer. At that event, we had so many people who were able to safely bike over to Fairview Park. And it was just an amazing experience. Uh we need to have a protected bike lane on Placentia, not a buffered bike lane. A protected bike lane with bollards. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, does anybody else wish to speak on uh uh item five?
Yes, Ms. McDonald, please.
Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Good evening, uh Mr. Mayor and City Council. So let's be clear on one thing, very important thing about all the streets and the project. These are all bikeways and we should be looking at every street as a place where the most vulnerable people. Ride and walk. And as David Martinez said, Placentia is designated as. A class four around Fairview Park and it should have bollards. And if we are going to do any more uh buffered bike lanes, I would really like to see as much protection for the cyclist. Um including bollards, delometers, maybe some sort of curbing. Um we are seeing cars driving in the bike lanes on um Fairview despite the green paint. Despite the signage. So um it's really important that we have protection for the most vulnerable. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else on this item?
Yes, Mark Vukovich, please.
Mr. Vukovich, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council. Um I wanted to echo everything in uh much less eloquence than the previous, as as the previous two speakers, both David Martinez and and um Ms. McDonald. Uh I think they said everything I wanted to say, but I also wanted to commend uh council and commend staff for the conversation that was had. And the conversation that's ongoing about how to uh really make our city better on this. And so I just want to appreciate the conversation and I uh I look forward to there being bollards here in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, let's close the public comment then. And uh Councilmember Chavez, do you wish to make a motion?
To approve the item.
Excellent. Anyone else want to second that? Second, then on seconds. Okay, um let's call call for the question.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Harland?
Yes.
Councilmember Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mar?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Uh yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Well done. And this is, this is the most perfect timing in the history of the city of Costa Mesa. Because we are uh doing our, calling our one public hearing item at exactly seven zero zero, which I don't believe we've ever done. So congratulations to the council staff and public for that. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title?
Yes, public hearing to consider city of Costa Mesa twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-nine housing element six cycle. Presentation by Ms. Lee, Economic and Development Services Director.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm going to go through a very brief PowerPoint. You'll give me one moment to share my screen. How does that look?
Good.
Okay, perfect. All right, so the item before you this evening is the six cycle housing element update covering the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine. Planning period. As you know, the housing element is a chapter of the city's general plan and is focused on establishing both policies and programs pertaining to the city's housing goals for the next eight years. Oh geez, I'm having trouble changing. There we go. We began this process together uh over a year ago now, and we began with a series of community outreach meetings. We held two citywide town hall meetings. Outreach meetings for each of the city's six voting districts, several other stakeholders meetings with affordable housing advocates, the development community. Local community organizations and service providers. We held four planning commission and city council study sessions open to the public. And we communicated with online surveys, mailers, community platform and social media posts in both English and Spanish. It was the first time that a planning effort and outreach effort of this magnitude has been undertaken in Costa Mesa in some time. This is our arena allocation. You've seen this table many times at this point. Um it's intended to show that our arena allocation, which is our fair share of housing uh for the region. As uh allocated by the state and SCAG is eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty units and those are distributed over these income categories. Shown here in this table. As you know, the city did appeal the city's arena allocation at the time based on. Um a number of concerns that we had with the methodology and the process, as did most other Orange County cities. And SCAG did deny Costa Mesa's appeal along with most all other appeals in Orange County as well. And after that process completed, staff really began on putting the housing element together and um finding a way to. Uh comply with our assigned arena as part of the housing element effort. The draft housing element, which is provided as an attachment to your staff report, uh both last meeting and this meeting, is the uh contains really four main chapters and then a number of technical appendices. It includes an introduction and community profile with uh a series of demographic uh data and information sets. It includes a constraints, resources and fair housing chapter, and then ultimately has a policy plan where specific programs or action items that the city is committed to taking over the next eight years. Are articulated. And the appendices include a past performance report, um which really reports on how we did over the last eight years. The site analysis, which demonstrates for purposes of housing element compliance and state law compliance. And that we've identified sites in the community that we believe um are appropriate for housing. We have a community outreach summary as an appendix and then a glossary of terms. Overall, the housing element is a high-level blueprint that identifies future housing opportunities. Um and really focuses on areas of the city that are already developed where housing and mixed use may be appropriate. And it all, it also identifies uh specific actions and programs. Uh that we believe uh will achieve those goals over the next eight years. Based on community feedback early on, these areas and corridors of the city are primarily the area north of the four oh five. The Sobeca area, Harbor Boulevard corridor, Placentia Avenue, West Nineteenth Street, the Mesa West Left area. Newport Boulevard, as well as incremental increases in ADUs uh citywide. In addition, in terms of specific actions or programs, the housing element identifies programs that uh. Speak to the city's continuing coordination with the state regarding Fairview Development Center, amending our specific plans and corridor plans and urban plan areas. And adopting an inclusionary housing ordinance, programs related to encouraging uh ADUs. And then other programs focusing on things like parking standards, measure Y, and other city programs and regulations. Regarding milestones throughout this process and following the community outreach stage. Uh the city prepared a draft housing element and released that element for public review. We've prepared a CEQA compliance document, an initial study mitigated negative declaration, and we released that for public review. And we've had a number of planning commission and city council study sessions that we held on March first, March twenty-third, April twenty-seventh, and then September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, most recently. And following that most recent council study session, um staffs made revisions to the housing element and then submitted that draft to state HCB. Uh as we are required to do by state law. The city received the state HCB comment letter in early December. And that comment letter uh really focused on requesting additional information and analysis in certain topical areas like fair housing. And also requested modifications and additions to certain housing element programs, including uh the program related to ADUs. Program three G pertaining to measure Y and program two M related to parking requirements and other programs as well. Staff made revisions to the housing element to address the HCD's comments, which were described in detail in our last uh stack report for our January eighteenth meeting. And we included in those revisions, um the states requested modifications to our programs. So since then, uh we revised the housing element and we've held a planning commission public hearings on November eighth, November twenty-second, and then also December thirteen. Of last year, the city's council's housing ad hoc committee held a community discussion regarding measure Y on January eleventh. And the city council had its first public hearing on the housing element updated its last meeting on January eighteen, where stack provided a comprehensive report. So since that meeting, uh the only revisions that were made to the housing element have to do with some minor boarding changes to program three G pertaining to measure Y. That were intended to reflect some of the council's comments from the last meeting. And um they're described in detail in the staff report. They do not change the substance of that program. And we've also added some additional information um that the state uh seems to be requesting from cities to appendix A. That have to do with the city's past efforts in supporting households for special needs populations. And those were our only revisions. So with that. And just as a reminder, the in the state has articulated a number of consequences for. Uh not adopting a compliant housing element. Uh we are required to send the housing element to the state for certification. And and they've included such consequences as loss of state grant funds, um loss of local control over development. And some legal uh avenues that can be taken by both the Attorney General and also outside groups. Um and also the possibility of a court suspending the city's authority to issue building permits or other land use approvals. And most recently, the state has um created something called the Housing Accountability Unit. And this unit is essentially focused on ensuring that local agencies adopt a compliant housing element and. Um maintain a compliant housing element over the eight-year planning period. Um this is something new to the cycle of the housing element, so we're not quite sure what to expect, but I think what we can expect is additional state oversight. Um over housing element compliance over the next eight years, certainly more than we've seen in the past. And that's a statewide uh effort. So with that, staff's recommendation this evening is for the council to adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and to adopt and approve. The housing element update so that the city has an adopted housing element by the state's deadline, which is um on February twelfth. And even after adoption of the housing element, our next steps are to continue coordinating with state HCB. And other agencies, including utility districts and airport land use commission staff, for example. And uh to submit the housing element to the state for its review and certification. And ultimately, if the state has additional comments at that point, staff will bring the housing element back to council. That concludes my presentation this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Uh okay, I was ca- we'll open up to council questions, and the first one I see is Mayor Protem Mar.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. And Ms. Lee, we got a number of letters.
We've got a lot of letters in the last, like, two hours, but we got a couple that speak specifically to the site survey and our site's identification and concerns whether that was done properly, whether we've responded sufficiently to HCD's letter and their concerns. And I think there's another, there's another issue raised, and I'm not remembering what it is off the top of my head, but can you, can you respond generally to, do we think we've sufficiently responded to HCD? Or is this gonna, are some of those things a work in progress as you continue to correspond with them?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, I have seen the comment letters. Essentially, what the state's comment letter asked staff to do was to provide additional information as to the housing opportunity sites, candidate sites that were identified in the Housing Element. So part of staff's revisions over the last few months were to go back through and add additional information that we believe satisfies that state requirement. And I have Nick Chan on the line who can go into some more detail, but that overall is, is our approach to addressing that question. We believe that we've done a good job of articulating why we believe those candidate sites are appropriate. Ultimately, staff will be submitting the Housing Element to the state, and if there's more additional requests for information from the state, then we'll respond at that point.
Hey, so I don't know, Mr. Chan, were you gonna chime in? Um, so yeah, and then my second question was, we also got a comment from the Kennedy Commission about being more explicit in terms of what we plan to have an inclusionary housing ordinance passed. And is that something that we think needs to be sort of identified with a definitive timeline? Or, you know, is, suffice to say, you think we're gonna get it done fast enough, that it's not an issue?
I think we're going to get it done fast enough, that it's not an issue. I also think that we've articulated a timeline in the Housing Element program. And I believe it's, it's either one year or two years from Housing Element adoption. If Nick or Justin or Scott can correct me if I've said anything wrong, please do. But the, the point is to move forward with the inclusionary housing ordinance quickly.
Ms. Lee, this is Nick. It's one year.
One year from Housing Element adoption is what we've said in our program.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
Okay, a council member, Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one question. I'm trying to take this all in. I can't believe we're finally at the point of considering this. But my one question is this, provided that we approve the Housing Element tonight and submit it to HCD, what is the time period in which we need to make our amendments to our zoning code?
Councilmember Harlan, what we've included in our program is a timeline of within three years from Housing Element adoption.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Do any council members have any questions? Any other council members? I don't see any. So let's open this up to the public. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, we do. Ms. Christine Knolf, please.
Ms. Knolf, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity tonight. As was mentioned, my name is Christine Knolf, and I'm here representing the Costa Mesa Affordable Housing Coalition. And first of all, just wanted to thank you for the process that the staff and council have taken, being able to speak into this process and be part of the study sessions. It's just been a great process this time around, and so we're really grateful for the changes that have been made and updates to the Housing Element. There are just a couple specific things that we wanted to point out for your consideration as you're continuing to move forward with your process. One is in Program 2L, where we have this great program laying out the percentage of area median income listed at 80%, and we would just recommend targeting income at 60% AMI or lower. That seems to be where the biggest need is and where we would want to see incentivize or incentives being offered at. The next is in Program 3B, the language regarding Fairview Development Center. Feels like it still leaves the door open for the state to do nothing over an extended period of time. And you just see the city talking about being able to negotiate agreement to develop residential within two years. It says, "or as modified by the state," and would just love to see that, "or as modified by the state," also within the two-year period, that we would be able to do something within the two-year period or identify additional sites that would accommodate the shortfall and not be dependent on waiting for the state. And then Program 3F, looking at the city, you know, as listed that it would comply with the state and federal laws, and we would just really love to see the city go beyond the state and federal laws to include long-term resident protections throughout or through anti-displacement and providing right of first refusal, basically looking to avoid what happened at the Costa Mesa motor end and wanting to make sure that we were, had some anti-displacement things in place, even beyond what state and federal require. We do have some concerns, and I don't know if this speaks to similar things that Mayor Pro Tem Mar was talking about, but the large, the larger sites with development agreements like Sacio and Pacific Arts Plaza, that it seems that, our view is that the city is over-relying on these sites to help accommodate the lower-income rena numbers. But we know that these orders, these owners have already said that they won't build affordable housing on those sites, and they wouldn't fall into an inclusionary ordinance because they already have the development agreements. But essentially, like, the two main things that we would love to see done, and it's great to hear. Okay.
Is that the end of three minutes? Okay. All right, so who, who do we have next?
Call-in user two, please.
Okay, by the way, before you speak, don't start the time, because I didn't say this now. We said it earlier. So you get three minutes and listen for the clerk at 30 seconds. She'll give you a voice warning, and then at three minutes, you're done. Okay, you have the floor. Call-in user one.
I guess that's me because I got told to unmute. I am concerned that you're doing this Housing Element with a negative declaration, which is basically saying that there won't be any environmental impact, which is astounding considering that we're being told we have no water. Our sewer lines couldn't accommodate more than a 30% increase. Our sewer plant couldn't. We'd have to go back to complete primary sewage treatment and abandon secondary then, which would be bad for our ocean. And I think other cities, in fact, I know that other cities are providing full environmental impact reports. We're not the norm. We're the outlier here. Even the city of LA is doing an EIR, so that's just wrong. And the other issue that I have was the comment that, "Well, we have to do everything that the state has says because if we don't, we'll lose local control." Well, it sounds like that horse is already out of the barn, if we're already hopping to to everything the state says. And in that regard, it's especially disappointing that our residents don't seem to matter in terms of 70% of our residents, very nearly, voted to adopt Measure Y, and then to say, "Well, somebody, some bureaucrat in Sacramento doesn't like it, so therefore we have to go against the express will of our residents." We have the right to petition our government under the First Amendment. We have the right to actually see things happen. And it's just very disappointing to me that bureaucrats are getting more attention than our residents. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the item?
Yes, Cynthia McDonald, please.
Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Good evening again. Last meeting, the council adopted a resolution supporting the purchase and preservation of Banning Ranch as open space and parkland. And I applaud that action, but I want to remind the council that the protection of Banning Ranch didn't come about easily. There was a court battle and many hearings before the Coastal Commission about the environmental documents that developers submitted. Without the ability to review the documents, preserving that land wouldn't have happened. We would, we have seen that same ability taken away from many cities by the recent bills passed in the California Legislature. I know that some council members are interested in modifying the overlays in the city and, in particular, the Newport Boulevard overlay. Should the city upsell parcels in that overlay for multifamily housing, developers will have the right to build large apartment buildings and using affordable housing density bonuses. The buildings could be five stories or, or higher. And using the loopholes in those laws, they may not even have to submit environmental documents. While I read the city's mitigation monitoring and reporting program, I came across statements about how developers may need to mitigate the noise of pile driving that will be used in some of these projects. And I wondered to myself, who would do this to Costa Mesa? Developers who build here, for the most part, don't live here. They don't shop here. They don't pay taxes here. They aren't urban planners, so they don't care what a city looks like or how it operates. These are guys who got MBAs, are in the business of making money. They don't care if a pile drive, if pile driver noises impact the residents. So who are those who care how we, how our city operates and what it looks like and the pile driver noise? Well, it's us, the residents. And we elected you to care for us, to look after us. But who are you? I have to tell you, some of you, I don't recognize you any longer. You're gonna adopt this Housing Element. You have to because you have a figurative gun to your heads. But you have stagnated in the adoption of an inclusionary housing ordinance. What has taken so long? Over 170 cities and counties in California have one. My guess is you haven't adopted one because developers don't like them. But you won't be able to control the amount of affordable housing a developer provides unless you do adopt one, which means until you do, you will get very little or nothing, and that is what has happened here for many years. Stop sitting on your hands. Look after the residents, the ones who are here now and the ones in the years to come. Take control of the planning of Costa Mesa. Look out for Costa Mesa's future. And one way you can do this is by endorsing the brand Wang Mendoza Tri-Partisan Land Use Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. So who's next?
The next speaker is Rich Gomez.
Mr. Gomez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Rich Gomez, and I'm with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I'll make this brief. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our members and our family members who reside in the city of Costa Mesa. They live, work, and recreate in the vicinity of these future projects. Once again, we believe that they will be impacted by environmental impacts of these projects as well. The city should require that these projects be built utilizing a local and skilled and trained workforce with the trades and the carpenters' union, keeping our young kids working and with a local hire component, keeping the, the residents of Costa Mesa working in the city that they live in and that they grew up in, not losing them to outskirts counties like San Bernardino, Riverside County. So also, you know, with the local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements, this reduces construction-related environmental impacts just as well, while benefiting the local economy. You know, we've, there's other cities that have adopted or, and, you know, they haven't hesitated and applied a skilled and trained workforce requirement to their private development projects in the city. What we're looking for is a level playing field. A lot of these projects that are built multifamily, mixed use, are built with contractors from out of state, out of the area, and don't pay the livable wage and provide benefits for their, their carpenters and tradesmen and women. So we're asking the City Council to consider that when these projects are built, that they should be built with skilled and trained, with a local hire component. You know, even these remodels or renovations of motels and hotels, those projects also should be built with skilled and trained. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, who's next?
Ms. Vukovich, please.
Mr. Vukovich, you have the floor.
Good evening. So when I was in college, I went to UCSB Gaucho's. I took a class on city politics and how cities operate. And I think the very, like, one of the first words the professor said is that cities are products of the state ultimately. And that's, and that's ultimately what cities are, is that cities work on, you know, basically on, on permission on, on, of the state. And for better or worse, that is the case. And so I wanted to recognize that fact in this particular discussion and that the city is put in a position to do something. And I want to appreciate that the city is doing everything it can to make sure that it follows the law and follows the lawful procedure that the state is requiring of it. Because I don't think it makes sense to, to fight something that it would ultimately lose. And so I want to appreciate the city for doing what it's can to really, like, take Costa Mesa really in, in interest here. You can disagree with the process, but, you know, at least following it procedurally, I think is a good, good idea. And so, yeah, I also wanted to appreciate the idea of opening up conversation about future overlays, including, like I said, Bristol and Dupre Boulevard and other places, because I would love to see, you know, healthy amounts of, of density in these places. I think there's a great, I'm forgetting, I think CBS Business video today that came out about the difficulty and problems of sprawl on the finances of cities. And if we can have healthy amounts of density, we're actually setting Costa Mesa up for, for a great future. And I don't mean New York City. I feel like when everyone says density, that's what people mean. I just mean, you know, more of a walkable neighborhood, somewhere where I can, you know, go to Triangle Square just from a walk from my house, you know? And so I look forward to having those conversations, and I, and I actually appreciate it happening because I, I don't think we've had that nuance for, for some time. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else left?
Yes, Cassius, please.
Mr. Rutherford.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I just wanted to call in tonight after hearing some of the NIMBY rhetoric and push back a little bit because I think a voice that doesn't, doesn't too often get heard at meetings like this, especially here in Costa Mesa, where we have 63% of our people are renters, and that's the highest percent of renters of any city in Orange County. And so I think, you know, that's a forward-thinking and progressive and working-class electorate and voter base that appreciates and would vote in support of a strong plan for housing in our community. So thank you for putting forward that strong plan, and I'm proud to support it.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Adam Thornton.
Mr. Thornton, you have the floor.
Hello. I'm commenting in regards to the initiative to keep only local workers from working in the city of Costa Mesa. I work as a commercial plumber. I reside in the
Excuse me, hold on one second. You're, you're talking now about our old, old business item number one, which is the next item we're gonna consider.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem. To stick around, and when, when it comes to that, you'll have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, when I heard the gentleman speak about the carpenters, I thought it was in regards to that also, so.
Yeah, it was, it was, had to do more with private.
Okay.
His thing. So anyway, who, who do we have next?
Call-in user three.
Call-in user three?
Yes, my professor at USC in political science had a little different view than prior speaker. And he said that the voice of the people was the ultimate decision of what was going on. And that spurred me on for my master's degree in statistics and how initiatives became a viable factor in California. We all know that the California Constitution grants us the ability to grieve, have a grievance through a city via an initiative. So to say that an initiative is a waste of the people's time is really an egregious comment. And I'd like to tell the other speaker that when Y was passed, our rental factor was around 60 to 62%. So even those people that were considered renters, it still factored in that this was over 69% voted positively by the people in Costa Mesa. And I agree with the other speaker that said, "I don't recognize this council." I'm gonna take that back. I recognize that this I'm gonna take that back. I recognize that this council is more leaning toward our prior council than it is what we thought we voted in. And I'm asking you, protect the people. This is NIMBY, this is a resident of Costa Mesa, asking you to represent the people. Not one person, not one group, the entire city. And we are part of the city.
Okay, who's next?
Further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll close public comment and entertain a motion on the item. Mayor Pro Tem Marty, have a motion?
I do, I move to adopt the housing element as written.
And let's see, let's do, I think, Councilmember Harper, did you want to second that? You want to second the motion, Councilmember Harper? I can't hear you.
Sorry, John.
Did you want to?
No, I don't want to second.
You did not want to second. Okay, how about Councilmember Harland? Do you wish to second the motion?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion, like Mayor Pro Tem Mar, and seconded by Councilmember Harland. The maker of the motion, Mayor Pro Tem Marty, wish to speak to your motion?
I feel like I've spoken about the housing element quite a bit over the last couple of months, so people are probably sick of hearing me say all of this, but no, I look, I'm excited to get this done. I think staff has done a really good job over the last couple of, I said, months, years at this point, that staff and our consultants have been working on pulling this together. It's been a tremendous effort, and we've tried very hard to be responsive to so many of the things, I mean, just the things that this council wanted, right? Much less things that we were hearing from the community. So we've got to get this done, so we can move on to the next thing. This is something I've talked about quite a bit, too. I want to do some comprehensive visioning for the city. I want to do that in a way that allows for us to provide maximum public input, visuals about what we want, debate about some of the density things we've talked about. I need to get the housing element done, so we can move on to that next step, which I think is really important. I do expect us to have inclusionary housing ordinance very shortly. So looking forward to getting that done and not, certainly not waiting a year. I think we need to have that happen much, much sooner. Also, you know, I think we're seeing some positive movement from the state regarding fair redevelopment centers. So I'm feeling optimistic that that might go somewhere soon. I just want to respond to some of the criticism too on this meeting. I mean, I think we all fully expect that. I'm very confident that I'm doing the right thing for Costa Mesa, that I'm doing what I believe is fundamentally in the best interest of the city. You can, you know, check my 460 that I have not received any campaign donations. I'm not suddenly a shill for the development community or any of the other things that I feel like I've been accused of in the last couple of weeks. I, I'm doing what I think is right. So I'm gonna continue doing that. Thank you.
Well put. Councilmember Harland?
Yes, well, I echo much of what Mayor Pro Tem has said. I feel like we've, we've kind of articulated this several times over the last, you're right, some months, it's actually years. And I remember when I was on planning commission and I was talking with my colleagues about the housing element and coming up and, you know, what that effort was gonna look like and you know, here it is a year plus later. And so I first wanted, you know, give a tremendous amount of appreciation and gratitude to our staff. Thank you, Ms. Lee and Development Services, our consultant. I know that we put a tremendous amount of faith in you and putting this together, collecting all the input. This is, you know, in the past, housing elements were somewhat of a perfunctory planning exercise. I think fifteen years ago, no one was really giving a lot of thought to what they meant. We're in a different environment, both regulatory as well as within our communities, and we are certainly facing a housing crisis. And so this is an important effort. I do want to comment on the fact that, you know, this is certainly in response to state regulations, but to my mind, that's not why we're doing this. It's not simply about compliance, it's about really setting the stage for what we need to do as far as site-specific planning, as well as larger-scale planning within our city. And I think this is a really thoughtful document. If you look at the community profile, it's given us a lot of really good, solid data to work with. I think a lot of our decision-making, at least mine, has been based on that. This isn't something simply about ideology or general planning principles. It's what does Costa Mesa need right now and what does Costa Mesa need in the future? And so I very heartily support this, and I hope we can get some broad support our council, and I know our community is looking forward to what's coming next. Thank you.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. It's, I never know when to get questions that come up during public comment, and so I'll take this time. The first one is, I'm just looking at our agenda and staff's recommendation. Does the, does the motion cover the recommendation, all of the elements we need, Ms. Lee?
The recommendation is to adopt and approve the initial study mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and then to approve and adopt the housing element update. Those are the two components.
Got it. Okay, sorry.
Motion corrected.
I didn't have this to come back and, you know, have to correct it later.
Yeah, I know, I didn't have the agenda on my screen when I made the motion.
Okay, so let's go back then. So if, so you're changing the, basically the motion to the staff recommendation, so we may, let it make sure that the second concurs.
Yes.
Okay, that's terrific. So that's the motion on the floor. Now back to Councilmember.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Lee, I was hoping you could comment. One of the comments during public comment was about sort of the EIR and our process being different than others. Could you explain that? I, I wasn't familiar that it was a different process than others. So can you just explain how we address environmental impacts as part of the housing element? And then, you know, as part of the zoning updates and actual projects as they are proposed and presented?
Sure, I'm happy to. So essentially, our approach to sequel compliance for the housing element, I think it's important to note that the housing element itself doesn't make any land use changes or change any densities or do any of those things. Those are actually actually subsequent actions to the housing element that will require their own environmental review. So our, our approach to this housing element, because it was a high-level blueprint and it's essentially identifying future programs for city implementation, was really to evaluate environmental impacts at a programmatic level that was commensurate with the level of detail that we had in the housing element. As part of the subsequent actions, we do expect there to be general plan amendments and urban plans and specific plan changes, all the things that we've talked about, and each one of those will require sequel compliance at that point and likely an environmental impact report. The document that we've prepared for the housing element is an initial study mitigated negative declaration. And essentially what that does is that a programmatic high-level evaluate environmental impacts of some of the policy statements that we've made. And it identifies high-level mitigation measures that we would follow through with over the next eight years. But the more specific, more typical environmental analysis that this council is used to seeing, like, on a project-specific basis, really comes at the time that the general plan of amendments and zone changes happen. I also would say that doing a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration is very common for a housing element. And the city of Irvine, the city of Tustin, the Ginebe, just for some examples off the top of my head is are all did negative declarations, and the cities that end up doing environmental impact reports for this type of process are the ones that we're doing concurrent land use element amendments that we're changing land uses and densities concurrently with the housing element. That's not what we're doing here. So there will be subsequent environmental review that get to the specifics of the general plan and zone changes that would be proposed at some future time.
Great, okay, thank you. That's really helpful. I'm gonna be supporting the motion. I do want to acknowledge and thank staff for the expanded outreach. You detailed that again at the start of your presentation, and I really appreciate the extra funding and the extra effort we took for that outreach. I was remembering a conversation not too long ago with Ms. Lee and our Assistant Director Dropkin, talking about Costa Mesa being the best place to learn planning, because we have a little bit of everything in this city. And I, I think that's something that we're pretty proud of. It's, we talk about our diversity and, and, you know, kind of the eclectic nature of the city. We enjoy being able to, you know, hit the beach from the River Trail, spend time in our two-hundred-acre Fairview Park, but then go watch a Broadway show at Sakerstrom, and the diversity of the city, I think, is really special. And I know it creates a lot of extra challenges for your team, and with respect to the housing element, you know, it makes it a very diverse housing element in terms of the programs and the needs that we're trying to address. But I think it does a really good job reflecting the diversity of our community and the diversity of those needs. So like my other members who've spoken so far, really excited to get this done and move forward into the visioning and execution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harper, you have the floor.
Yeah, I want to thank Sandra Guinness for speaking up today. She's got a lot of experience in the city, along history in our city, and in a background in land development and land planning. So I respect her comments and her comments about Measure Y and what voters voted for and wanted to see in our community. And, you know, I have a hard time when I talk to friends and people in the community, supporting this, because, you know, they, when you say four, we have forty thousand dwelling units, we're gonna add eleven thousand. You know, it's, it's disturbing to them, and I'm sure you all understand that. And I know that's why there's a lot of information about why we have to do this, a lot of comments as to why we need to do this. And I don't want to pick on those. I understand your perspective, and I think that I, but it's hard for me to say as leadership representing my community, I think it's one of the reasons I'm voted, I was voted to this council. I certainly didn't try that hard. Is because people knew where I stood on this issue. And I can't help but, but vote against this for that reason. There is a time, you know, that one young gentleman spoke about UC Santa Barbara, which is a great place to go to school and party. But no offense, I went to Chico State. But I don't think cities are the product of the state. I think local government was designed, and our system of government was designed to have local authority and local jurisdictions for reason. So those in a local community can represent and design what they want for their community. A state mandates that come from legislatures or appointed boards that are influenced by developers and others, without an intercerent community, that's problematic. And, and I, when I step back and look at what this city is gonna do, if they execute the eleven thousand units and you add thirty thousand people to a city of a hundred and ten thousand, and you watch, it's gonna happen economically, the South Coast Plaza, which is probably declining. You're gonna see a decline in your revenue, you're gonna put a strain on city services. And it's, it's kind of a race to the bottom, frankly. And that's, that's the, that's my macro view. And and I, and I hope you can at least understand perspective. And so it's a direction I don't think the city should go, and I don't think it's a direction the residents and neighbors that I know wanted to go in. You know, we talked about the city needs this. Well, economically, the city needs, needs housing for two percent growth, which is nine hundred homes, not eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty. With regard to another speaker that spoke, and I appreciate their passion, sixty-three percent are renters. This housing element plan doesn't solve that problem. This housing element plan doesn't create less renters, it probably creates more renters, frankly. And I think it's, that's the direction we're heading. I know it's a difficult thing, but I don't think, the problem that I fundamentally have with the rest of my council, and I say this respectfully, fundamentally, I don't think we should do a need, because we're never gonna build enough. And we can't, we can't change a city against what voters want, your citizens want, just because Sacramento says you have to. Because I don't think Sacramento is doing things in our best interest always, and we have to recognize that. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the other council members wish to speak about this? Okay, no, no. All right, well, listen, I support the motion. I think, you know, in terms of, should we have been doing other stuff while we worked on the housing element? I think that that's a reasonable question. However, the housing element is a state mandate. And so the staff spent a tremendous amount of time to address that state mandate, as did every other city. And I appreciate the work that they did, and of course, time, and the time they spent on that is time that couldn't be spent on something else, and it's a zero-sum game. Are we gonna build one thousand, eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty units in the next eight years in the city of Costa Mesa? Of course not, we're not gonna do that. We do have a housing crisis, not just in Costa Mesa, but in throughout California and in the whole region. But it's not realistic to basically, you know, increase with all those units. It just cannot happen. But we need to increase our housing stock, and it is too expensive to rent and buy in Costa Mesa, because the demand is much higher than the supply, and the supply is not growing. It's not about growth of the city, as the council member just said. It's that we don't have a supply of affordable housing for the citizens that we have in Costa Mesa. And that's what we're trying to address, not necessarily exclusively by this housing element, but it's a piece of it. It's something where we consider different options. And then, over the next few years, we'll, we'll look at putting them into place. Like, you know, inclusionary housing ordinance, we are working on that. Could we have done it sooner if we weren't spending our time on the housing element? Yes, absolutely, we could. Could have, but again, that's a state mandate. And then, in terms of Measure Y, we have an ad hoc committee that's looking into that issue. I'm not going to preempt them or get it far ahead of them. I trust the work that they're doing. And they're excellent and working hard on the issues pertaining to Measure Y and what our options are. I do believe that if anything happens, it will go to the voters to decide. And so that is consistent with Measure Y and not against it in any way. Nobody's trying to undermine the voters. So anyway, there you have it. That's why I support this. Let's get it passed. Let's move on to some of the other items that could very well be more productive than the hard work that we've done and the necessary work we've done in the housing element. Let's call for the question.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah.
Councilmember Harper?
No.
Councilmember Harland?
Yes.
Councilmember Camaros?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mar?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries six-one with Councilmember Harper voting no.
All right, excellent job. We're still doing well on time, but let's take a break. And let's take a fifteen-minute break and resume at eight oh five. See you at eight oh five. Okay, we should be back. We're now moving on to, we have two more items. We have one old business item and one new business item. So the first of those is our old business item number one. Madam Clark, would you please read the title for us?
Thank you. This is the Community Workforce Agreement, presentation by Mr. Seth Raman, Public Services Director.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seth Raman, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for hearing this item. We have Mr. Yang, our city engineer, he'll make a presentation and then, and then we'll be here to ask any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Seth Raman. So let me share my screen and start my presentation. So, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and honorable members of the city council, good evening. I'm Sung Yang, a city engineer for our city of Costa Mesa. It's a nice presentation is on the Community Workforce Agreement. So what is the Community Workforce Agreement? The Community Workforce Agreement, or CWAs, are also known as project labor agreements or PLAs. The CWAs aim to increase employment opportunities for our city of Costa Mesa residents and also to facilitate the training of, for the city's students and veterans through apprenticeships. So what are the local benefits? For one, CWAs promote a well-trained workforce in the construction profession by encouraging underrepresented groups, local residents and veterans for various opportunities to learn and excel in one or more of the construction trades. In addition, CWAs also reconcile labor disputes in a peaceful manner and resolve grievances without the need for strikes or labor short stoppages. Also, several agencies have already adopted similar CWAs, such as nearby cities, San Ana, Anaheim, and Garden Grove. So what are the local hiring goals? Well, the duration of the CWAs for five years and it commences on the agreed effective date. Also, the goal of the CWAs for Costa Mesa residents, Costa Mesa veterans, Costa Mesa high school graduates, building trades and multi-craft curriculum graduates and/or area residents residing in the remaining parts of Orange County, to perform up to 35% of the total labor hours for qualified projects. So what are the local hiring preferences? Well, number one is Costa Mesa area residents first. Number two, veterans regardless of residency. Number three, graduates of high schools in Costa Mesa. Number four, graduates of building trades, multi-craft core curriculum. And finally, number five, all other Orange County residents. So what's the CWA implementation process? Well, number one, projects listed in attachment F in the CWA will be subject to the CWA unless agreed to otherwise. The contract's still subject to competitive bidding as per state law. Contractors are currently required to pay prevailing wages to their workers since Costa Mesa is a general law city. Several of our existing contractors, such as All American Asphalt and RJ Noble, are already fully unionized. The following are the CWA provisions. Number one, contractors recognize the Building and Trades Council as a sole and exclusive bargaining representative for craft employees engaged in project work, as well as the primary source of craft labor. Contractors who are not independently signatories to this master labor agreement with the Building and Trades Council have the option to hire a member from their own core workforce. Then alternatively, an employee through an appropriate union hiring hall and another core employee and another through the referral system and so on, until a maximum of five core employees are hired. Also, all additional employees shall be requisitioned from the craft hiring hall established by the Building and Trades Council. So what projects are exempt from the CWA? Well, these are the following: project design contracts, professional office and other non-manual employees, equipment and machinery purchases, work performed by city employees or other government agencies, work performed by inspectors employed by the city, work with funding or grant restrictions, and laboratory testing, such as environmental compliance requirements. So in terms of the CW administration, the CW administration costs are estimated to be approximately 1% for the course of several projects. The cost for consultant services for the administration of CWA will be assigned to respective project budgets. So in summary, the CWA is intended to promote a local workforce by requiring contractors to meet 35% local hiring goal. The CWAs aim to increase employment opportunities for Costa Mesa residents and to facilitate training for the city's students and veterans through a prepositions. And also CWAs are monitored by independent consultants retained by the city to ensure that project goals are met and to enforce the agreement. And finally, several current city projects, as mentioned before, are already being performed by union contractors. So that concludes our presentation and we open up to the city council for any questions to staff. Thank you very much. So let me stop sharing my screen.
Oh, that's terrific. Thank you, Mr. Yang. Good presentation, very concise. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for our staff? Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to ask Mr.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to ask Mr. Yang to actually show that last slide again. There was, the first bullet on that slide mentioned, the language, I think, is a little bit inconsistent, and I just want to be clear. So I think it was your last slide? About the thirty-five percent? Goal, yeah, okay. So in our staff report, and in the actual agreement, I think the language around this number is a target or a goal. This bullet here says requiring contractors to meet the thirty-five percent. So can we just get a clarification? My understanding is that, you know, the goal is thirty-five percent. That may not happen the first year or the second year, as we, you know, as part of the intention here is to develop the workforce, right? That may not currently exist in Costa Mesa, for example. So I want to get clarification on whether this is a requirement or a goal. And then I'd like to get a sense of what the expectations are in terms of whether we meet that thirty-five percent each year of the contract term.
So, Mr. Mayor, I can start answering the question, and maybe others can chime in. Yeah, the thirty-five percent is a goal that we want to achieve. It could be even, hopefully, a minimum down the road. But it's not required that they meet it right away. It might take us some time to get to that number and maybe hopefully go beyond that number. So it's the intention that they meet that goal, but it's not required that they meet that goal on every single project. Hope it's clear.
Got it, okay. It was just that top bullet that confused me a little bit, seeing that require language. Do we have an estimate? One of the things I really appreciate as part of the proposal here is the monitoring requirement. So we'll have an opportunity, I think I saw, annual reporting on sort of how we're progressing relative to this goal in each of those tier areas. What is our expectation? Do you have any predictions on, again, the progress towards this goal over the five-year term?
Councilmember Reynolds, at this time, we did not collect that kind of data. So we really don't have that detailed information at this time. But in future, we will have that kind of data. We will have that kind of information as we go through this process. We will know how many local people are working on different projects. How are we, you know, we have to work to exceed, you know, what's happening right now if we are not meeting that goal.
Okay, okay. I think what I'm understanding is, we don't really know where we are now. I think we know we're lower. Maybe in some of the comments that we're getting here in public comment, I think there's folks who are very experienced with these programs. I'm really interested in sort of what to expect, whether we're going to hit that thirty-five in year one, or year five, or somewhere in between. And I appreciate that there's probably lots of variables.
I'd like to just jump in here, just to give a little bit of, just sharing some information from project labor agreements that I've been personally involved in in the past in previous roles as once, as a harbor commissioner for the Long Beach with a four billion dollar CIP program over my tenure, being there five years, and then also the city of Long Beach, which also had a project labor agreement. And so I think that the goal, obviously, is always to reach that higher number, that as close to thirty-five percent as possible. There are different categories of workers, right? So your worker utilization rates is something that your monitoring firm would track and give you reporting on. Typically, at the staff level, you'll get those reports every month. The good thing about that is that we're not waiting till once a year to, as staff, to be able to coordinate with the trades and coordinate with the contract administrator who's monitoring this to make some of those changes, or to make sure that we're getting the outcomes that we all want, that we all collectively agreed, or are trying to pursue with the CWA. So at the staff level, once we have an administrator on board, you monitor that on a monthly basis. You do additional trainings and conversations with the contractors, all with the aim of getting you there. And so it shouldn't take five years to get to thirty-five percent. But, you know, obviously, there are some things that we need to create with the apprenticeships and that pathway, and getting those networks, those relationships really cemented, which we would be working on with the trades to do that and to facilitate that. But once a year, we would be reporting to the council. But all along, we would be working very closely with the trades, with nonprofits, with community colleges, and with all of the different organizations that are in place today that the trades use to facilitate getting that information to our residents, getting our residents into those programs, getting our residents onto those jobs. If that helps.
Yeah, that's really helpful. So we have this thirty-five percent as a goal. We're going to do monitoring to see where we are relative to that goal, and that'll help us determine what additional activities may be to engage into if we're falling short of that. That's what I'm understanding. Yeah, okay, great. I had a couple of questions.
We'd also have that information by category. And so we could see if we're doing really well with veterans, but we're not doing as well with people overall from the region, et cetera. So the information that's gathered is usually pretty specific. It's at that level of detail, and it allows for that kind of informed decision-making so we can focus with a staff, with the trades, and also with other organizations, where exactly we need to focus our efforts to get the outcomes that we really want to achieve.
Got it, okay. I had a question about our project list. I think this was Appendix F, Attachment F. My understanding is that the projects were selected, if they were sort of currently on our CIP budget, valued over a million or so. I had two questions. There were some projects on that list that, I have questions whether they're a good fit. One is the projects at Fairview Park. Just, I know this is coming up in our next agenda item, but we hear a lot about the different sort of sensitivities and considerations related to any project work at Fairview Park, all of the engagement with other agencies, the required archaeological oversight, the required Native American oversight. In particular, I think it was the Fairview Park Implementation Plan stood out to me because I think that's more of a planning document. Native restoration seems very specialized. Can you comment on that and clarify for me what sort of the intent would be in terms of what work would and wouldn't be included related to Fairview Park?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Reynolds, yeah, you're right, Fairview Park is a sensitive area. It has, as you mentioned, the Wernher Pools and archaeological sites, Native American heritage sites. It's a nature preserve too for us, so. At this time, I mean, you know, as you mentioned, we did not really dive into the details of what portions of Fairview Park should be part of this and what should not. We listed all the projects that exceeded a million dollars. And, and I agree with you on the sensitivity of this one, that especially the work is specialized. So the Fairview Park Master Plan, at this point, all we have is $250,000 in our budget to do the master plan study on this one. And it might take more than that. And we'll be working on just a steady portion, actually, over the next, you know, some years before we actually get into the implementation phase. So it's not a traditional construction type of project. So if that's something that should not be part of this one, you can make that recommendation.
Okay. Mayor's opinion is that the projects on that list are intended to be sort of built environment construction projects, right? Not planning and design, is that right?
That's correct, yeah. The design portion of the project are exempt from CWA.
Okay, okay. And we can add projects to the list at any point, right? Remove projects? I'm a little bit concerned about ending up in a situation where a project that's not, has sort of services required, maybe outside of what the expertise is among the members of this agreement. I don't want to be sort of bound to not being able to hire people with the appropriate expertise for Fairview Park.
Mr. Mayor, I can respond partly to that. Councilmember Reynolds, we do have the right to add projects. We, the current language of the agreement provides that we can remove projects only if they are, we decide not to go forward with them for reasons of funding or otherwise. So if there is concern about the Fairview Park project specifically, we could either take those off the list, or we could add a caveat to allow us to remove those if the specialized needs for those projects cannot be met through the Community Workforce Agreement.
Okay, that's helpful. Last question is related to the monitoring and reporting in this CWA administrator role. We talk a lot about sort of staff time and limited staff time. So can you describe what the plan would be for the CWA administrator? Sort of who would serve in that role, and how we would do the monitoring?
Yeah, agencies that have adopted CWA have typically hired an outside consultant to help monitor, administer the CWA, and monitor the agreement to make sure it's all met. And what we have seen is, so we had some information in our staff report, but we did some more work on it. And what we found out is, for example, Long Beach, over the period of last five years, they averaged 0.8% or, you know, in that range of the construction cost towards the administration of the CWA. So we think getting into a similar type of a multi-year agreement to start the process will be achieving a similar result.
So less than one percent of project costs on average to support, okay.
That's okay.
The tier question, starting the type of work that they would do. It would be facilitating the conversations with the contractors so that they're, you know, clear as we do our bidding processes on the requirements and the workforce agreement, doing some site visits as well. They would actually go on job sites as needed to do some spot checks. They would audit the payrolls, get the information to certify that someone is a Costa Mesa resident, for example. If that's the category that is being reported to the administrator as having been met with a specific person. And so they do that payroll certification and verification. They also can do training. In some cities, they serve as the jobs coordinator in terms of that facilitation role, right? With the local college or the local apprenticeship program that's being created, or with ones that exist to create that pathway from that resident to the program and into one of the job sites, and, you know, further enhancing those apprenticeship opportunities. And so it's a real essential part of this whole program. That's not our expertise, obviously. We want to get somebody who's good at it, that's qualified to do it. We would put that out to a request for proposals, for a competitive process. And there are firms that specialize in this and are very good at it, and will sort of help us achieve those outcomes. And again, work with us and work with the trades and work with the contractors to get to those specific populations that we want to make sure, getting those opportunities, that we're doing local hires. We have Costa Mesa residents that wouldn't otherwise be working on these job sites, having that opportunity, giving more opportunities for our youth to get engaged in trades and have sustainable careers with dignified work and a good income, and, you know, hopefully earn a middle-class living. That's all something that the administrator could help to achieve as we get the program up and running, and it starts to graduate and become more mature over time, and really creating that sort of workflow and path for that level of success with it.
That the administrator would be a hired consultant who not only reports and does, you know, whatever quality checks on the data we're getting, but is also doing the direct engagement to meet that thirty-five percent goal.
Yes, usually, it's a team, a firm that will put forward a team. They'll have a jobs coordinator person, they'll have someone who's a certified payroll person. And so they have those different skill sets on the team to be able to do that. They will come to the bid conferences with the bidders just to say, this is how it's working now in Costa Mesa. This is what's required for you as a contractor on one of our projects. And this is the kind of reporting that we're going to need from you, and expect this to be on job sites, expect us to collect that information with certified payroll reports, et cetera. So it's usually a consultant that is a sort of one-stop shop, provides the full suite of services, and then reports to us on a monthly basis. Will call special meetings as needed with us and the trades and the contractors so that by the time we come to you, a year from implementation, we can tell you this many veterans were hired, this many Costa Mesa graduates were hired, this many local residents were hired, et cetera. And we achieve this level of success, somewhere up to thirty-five percent, hopefully close to it, but if not, also a plan on how to get us there and make it a lot stronger.
Got it, okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Do any other council members have any questions of staff? Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, staff, for answering those diligent questions. I really had one question, and it was about the thirty-five percent language. Is that on the higher end of most CWAs? Or is that like around industry average?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chavez, I think it's what we have seen in other agreements too. It's pretty standard.
Okay, yeah, it seemed like it to me as well. And I think, just to reiterate, remember Reynolds' points, you know, I think that's a good aim to have for the intent of this agreement, right? Is have at least one-third of the workforce be from Costa Mesa. And I think anything we can do down the line to get the number higher as we, you know, invest in our students and invest in programs in Costa Mesa, I think we better. But I was just curious how high the number was. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from council? I don't see any hands raised. Oh, Councilmember Harper, go ahead.
All right, thank you. On schedule F, you listed the contracts, but what are the budget for those contracts or those projects? What's the total budget for those projects? Anyone can answer that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Harper, so I added up all the projects that are listed, and they add up to almost $200 million.
I'm sorry, is that two hundred million?
Yeah.
Two zero zero?
Yes.
Three zeros? Sorry, $200 million.
But I want to point out that this is the entire CIP for the built-out conditions of Costa Mesa. And if you look at our annual CIP, the way we do it, it's about fifteen to sixteen million dollars is what we do every year. So for a five-year contract, you're actually looking at eighty million dollars. So when we have listed all these projects, the actual value could be about eighty million dollars over the next five years.
So you lost me. Eighty million dollars, you lost me a little bit. You kind of cut out, sorry.
Sorry. So while we list all these projects, over the course of the CWA five-year agreement, we think it's going to be eighty million dollars.
We think we're only going to do eighty, got it. We're only going to do eighty. But we listed two hundred, and we pick what we want to pick?
Yeah.
We can always add, we can always add projects to this agreement, right?
Yes, but, you know, our capacity to do projects and how we've been doing over the past many years and what we really anticipate, it's going to be in the range of eighty million.
So I read some emails for some people, some residents who were, the quote of the number that this would cost this, the project labor agreement would cost the city an extra $7.8 million. Do you know where they, how they arrived at that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Harper, I have no idea how they arrived.
No idea? But you said in your staff report, and I'm kind of disappointed in the staff report that it talks about the fiscal responsibility for the fiscal section here, and it says- for the fiscal section here and it says, it says, uh, funding for the administration of CWA will be included with, within each project's budget. So is that the two and a half percent that you put on the eighty million?
So, um, Congressman Harper, um, the two and a half percent was initially, you know, we talked to, uh, some people and, you know, for a million-dollar project, if you just look at a million-dollar project, they think it's going to be twenty-five thousand dollars. But when we did more research on this one and we, uh, got somewhat information on, on five-year data from other cities, what we have seen is they have one agreement with the, with the consultant to manage multiple projects over years. And that average is actually zero point eight percent, not two and a half.
Okay, so you have a smaller number. So when you say, when you say manage, they're going to be testing to see if we've hired veterans and apprentice worker, local Costa Mesa people in the order. Is that, is that correct? That's their job primarily?
So, so their job is to work with the contractor and, you know, to, to review the employees they are proposing on the job to verify that they are Costa Mesa residents or veterans and all those, do, what criteria they meet? And do they meet thirty-five percent goal? Are they working towards meeting that goal? Yeah, are they, uh, you know, of the union shop?
They're going to do a little more to work with them to help them hire people or find people or coordinate people. That's part of their role. Should drive and develop a program. I see Lorian nodding, so I'm in the.
Yes.
I'm saying, yes, it's okay. It's okay. I'm, I'm good with short answers, Rajah. I'm, I'm a simple guy. So, uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to save everybody time here. So, uh, and I'll go back to the requirement versus a goal. It's a goal to do this, but it's not required. It sounds like, uh, it sounds like that Pirate's Caribbean thing. It's a, it's more of a guideline than a rule. So what happens if you don't meet the goal financially to the contractor, to the city, to those involved, those that are accountable?
So Congressman Harper, uh, the, the, it's, it's the goal to meet the thirty-five percent and we want to do everything we can to get to that number. And what we have seen is other cities, that's why we have different.
I understand, I understand it's the goal. I'm going to cut you off. I understand it's the goal, but what happens if they don't meet the goal? What's the repercussions financially or contractually? Is there anything at all?
So Councilmember Harper, who's the "they"? Just to clarify, so we give you proper information. When you say, what happens when they don't meet the goal? Are we talking about the individual contractor?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So if it's the individual contractor, we're going to know that pretty early on.
Who else would I be talking about? If you're talking about the consultant?
I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure if you, that they are the trades in general, the whole thing, the whole, uh, eighty million dollars in fi- in five years. So, um, we're going to get that information on a contractor-by-contractor basis. We're going to get it also by project. And again, it's reported monthly, which is the huge benefit of it. And so on a monthly basis, we're going to be able to see no progress, great progress, eh, iffy progress and be able to facilitate that so that we don't get to that point. But if at the end of year one, we're at thirty percent, the, the, the projects don't get canceled, we're still going to do our CIPs. These are projects that we are going to do anyway. But now we have the benefit of, oh, thirty percent. So one in three folks was still a Costa Mesa resident slash veteran slash, uh, high school graduate, local hire. And so it's still a benefit to the region, it's still a benefit to the city, for example. Or if it's even twenty-five percent, okay, well, one in four. And so no, the, the contractor doesn't get fired or terminated. But we have pretty easy information readily available quickly to pivot and turn, do some additional referrals if we need to. We have a homeless shelter where folks are hopefully going to also be able to participate if they, if they need a career path or they need to transition into a different career. And so we're, we're hopeful that we're going to have a, you know, good processes in place to make the referrals and get the numbers as high as possible. But the, the programs won't stop. CIPs, we're going to build regardless.
With all due respect, and I, I work in a blue collar industry. It is hard to hire people right now. It is brutal. Fifteen years we've been looking for, oh, we've always had people we're trying to hire. And, and so I, you know, I can't fault the contractor that can't find someone. So I understand your dilemma. I understand why it's a long answer because the, the, really, the short answer is there's no repercussions contractually. There aren't. Because I don't know how you penalize someone or can't find someone to work for you if they're doing everything they can do. I guess that would be the report that came back. Um, so I don't know that you, you necessarily meet your goal, you intend to meet it, but w- w- we're, we're asking for something that's, uh, I, I, it, it, there's no contractual teeth to it in my opinion, so. I- is there a concern, and I'm reading this too, that I understand from labor statistics that fourteen percent of our workforce is unions. And if I now thought, if, if normally ten people would bid a project, we now are looking at eight less that would bid the project. If only fourteen percent of the construction workforce, um, uh, is union and we're restricting our, really our preferred bidders to unions, aren't we reducing the, the amount of opportunity the city has to to, 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 uh, get good contractors and get, get low bids?
Oh, no, I would say no. And so, I mean,
So you're saying, I mean, I'll step right there. You're saying to me that because I have less people bidding, I'm going to get better bids?
No, I'm not saying that you're going to have less people bidding.
Oh, how's that?
And so from my, so from my experience, again, working in cities five times the size of Costa Mesa.
Lorian, I've got ten letters from, I've got ten letters saying, from people saying, hey, you're going to, you're going to lock us out of bidding these contracts. I mean, you could quote what you did in another city, but it, it seems obvious to me if I'm restricting the number of bidders and the, and the, and that you have to be a union, it eliminates those that aren't unions.
You don't have to have a full union contractor.
I don't have to feel, I don't have to have a partially, okay. But it's still, so if I've got a hundred percent non-union company, I can't bid, correct?
You can bid as a subcontractor. So you have different opportunities.
And then, and then do, do I have to pay a union dues, participate, union fees if I do that as a subcontractor?
I believe that, that the, the employees would need to do that for sure, but I can. Right.
Sorry, it's, it's really hard to listen to this conversation. If you're going to ask her a question, can you let her finish her sentence?
I think, I think, when, when you want to talk.
Be a little bit more respectful.
You comment on what I say. I don't care. I don't care.
I'm not able to hear her answer to your question because you're interrupting her before she said.
So I, you know what? Here's the thing is, Dawn, uh, just if I could take some control back of this meeting. This is the time when we a- ask questions. So it is a fair point. Go ahead and ask questions. I'm sure you have a lot of comments that you want to make and you'll have the opportunity to do that when a motion's on the table. But if you could,
Okay.
if you could just follow the format that we use for literally every item that we do and ask questions now.
Okay, okay. So I, I guess I'm trying to get to an answer, John. Forgive me, forgive me, Andrea. I'm trying to get an answer and that. Sometimes I don't feel like I'm getting an answer, but I'm getting something around an answer.
Councilmember Harper, um, Congressman Harper, just want to point out that earlier at this meeting in the consent calendar, you approved an item to award a contract to All American Aspire for almost three million dollars. That's a union contractor who did a little bit, submitted a little bit.
Yeah.
And received, uh, approval. So, so, so it doesn't mean that we will not get low bids from union contractors. We do. And that's a good example.
So if we don't have an issue getting bids from union contractors and they're always competitive, why are we restricting this to, uh, a higher percentage of those contractors being union bidders?
So you, your original question, Councilmember, I believe, was, did we feel that this would cool the bids? That we would get fewer contractors bidding? And my response to you was no. That hasn't been my experience working on four billion-dollar capital projects and programs or even a hundred-million-dollar capital projects and programs. It has not been my personal experience. And as a CFO, I was always looking for that because I knew that I would have to deal with the budget implications of not getting low bids, right? And so I can say that from my experience, that was not the case. We didn't get fewer bids. That wasn't what happened. You're going to get a different mix of bidders. You might get some different contractors. You're going to have some subcontracting. But it, uh, most contractors understand that cities have an interest in having local hires now. But that's something that a lot of cities have wanted to do. They're working with them on it. Some have actually transitioned to full-unionized workforces just to simplify it. And so it's not been my experience that it cools the bids and you have folks that just throw up their hands. One of the reasons why we chose these projects, just to, to give you some comfort, is the fact that they are larger projects. That might be the case with smaller projects, which is why most cities will choose projects of a good sizable amount. Half a million, in most cases, to be honest. Cities will choose a lower threshold than what you see here tonight. They'll choose a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project or above. In our case, we went with a million dollars and above. And so, um, in, in that space and that realm, we don't feel like it'll cool the bids.
If we feel like we get enough bids and they're competitive enough, why do we need this agreement?
The whole benefit of the Community Workforce Agreement is that community part. Therein lies the beauty of the Community Workforce Agreement. It's a policy decision on the part of the council. Do you want to have an annual CIP program of ten, twenty, thirty, forty million dollars? You get the lowest bid. It can, the bids can come from anywhere and we can hire from anywhere. And, and we're okay with that. Or do we want to create some pathway for our own residents to have a trade, a career, a new way of life, an actual steady income in some cases, and having additional youth that participate? Do you want that local benefit? Does it matter if the folks that are working on our projects for our community and our city come from our community and our city? That's, that's the essence of the Community Workforce Agreement. Otherwise, it's just a regular public works program, which is fantastic too. I mean, we have great public works program now, right? Where we build great things for the community. But do we want to have the opportunity for our own, you know, Costa Mesa high school students to be able to have a path through an established trades and apprenticeship program to work on their own, their own city's projects?
So could you have the, could you, are you done? I'm sorry, do you want to interrupt you?
No, I'm done, yeah.
Could you have those same components in the bidding process and the requirements for your city works projects without, without a PLA? In other words, can you require contractors to do the things you're referring to without them being union shops and have the same goals and have the same process without a PLA, without blocking out other apprentices, their non-union apprentices? And there were, by the way, there were, I think there were ten, uh, ten student apprentices that wanted to come speak tonight and couldn't speak tonight because they had class and, uh, and, uh, and we wouldn't allow them to speak in general comments. I understand. But you've got, you, you, the, the, I feel like, do you think the agreement might block out people that are non-union that are residents, that are apprentices or, or veterans that can't, that don't qualify? Because as a union-based contractor, and you could put, could you put the components of this PLA in your, in your city's requirements for contractors? And expand your, expand the people that can bid?
I'm not aware of another mechanism to achieve this. I mean, I can turn to Kim to see if there's an, because we have to follow the public contracting code. And I believe that through a PLA is the way that we've established that we can create that link between the trades, apprenticeships, and these jobs. But I'll let you handle that legal question, Kim.
Yeah, um, I, I think it would be difficult because, um, e- each individual contractor would be, um, having to basically establish their own program. And I think the goal here is that we have, um, a program that the contractor can already take advantage of, i- as it were. There's already in place these existing contracts. There's already in place, um, a mechanism. And there's that neutral person that we would hire, uh, to implement not just one contract, but a whole group of contracts at a time. Mr. Seth the Ramen could probably answer better than I can in terms of the logistics of incorporating all of the uh, criteria into each and every, uh, bid specification that we would do.
Did, um, within the context of the agreement, I know, um, from ABC, ABC, Southern California, Russell Johnson sent a letter with some language to try and at least accommodate those apprentices from other areas that are non-union and also actually, uh, uh, actually support, uh, non-union apprentices within our own city as well. Did, uh, did council or city manager consider that language in your, in your, in your agreement?
We had discussions with, uh, different organizations and the non-unionized apprenticeship programs regarding that. I mean, in the end, we felt that going with the, um, Los Angeles Orange County, you know, trades union construct, especially uh, one that I'm, I'm very familiar with and I feel very comfortable where those outcomes can get established. And there's a lot of, uh, experience there. There's a good track record of foundation and framework that exists that we could piggyback on without having to reinvent the wheel, that this was the best, best path forward. Is there an opportunity in the future to consider that? Um, I think certainly, um, that, that could be the case. And, uh, that's the council's choices. It would be, it's even the council's choice tonight if you'd like to amend that. But, um, we felt that going forward with the, what you had this evening was, uh, an intelligent path forward. It's, it's proven. It's a strong, solid track record. And it's one that we could definitely build on.
Yeah, I thought, I thought this was just language that allowed, that, that, that took advantage of existing programs. It just allowed other apprentices from, from our, from our own community that were not union members. So it, it solves some of the problems, so, um. I think I'm done, but thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Reynolds?
All right, I had, I had one other question, um, that I had forgotten and, and whether it helps or not, I want to, um, sort of share, uh, I had asked a similar question as Councilmember Harper and I wanted to, um, see if maybe my answer is, is helpful. Um, my question is, um, there was one part of this agreement, the bottom of page eleven, um, related to out-of-state workers. Um, and the, as I understand it, we say that any work performed by out-of-state workers is excluded from the calculation of the thirty-five percent. Um, and I was just curious why that is. That seemed odd to me. Um, I, I, I'm assuming out-of-state workers is uncommon, um, but why wouldn't that be factored into the, um, thirty-five percent calculation and goal?
Um, I think that the, that question should be probably directed to, uh, council for the, for the trades. Uh, they had a, a specific experience, uh, in the past that, um, indicated that that kind of language needed to be included.
Okay, so maybe someone during the comments can answer that?
Yeah, we could ask Mr. Medrano, his, his counsel, to, to address that issue.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I don't think, try to, let's see if that's covered during the public comments. If it's not, to your satisfaction, when public comment's done, we can come back to it.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll listen carefully for that. Um, and then I, um, just to one question, you had Councilmember Harper. Uh, I, I, I think other, some other councilmembers here spend a lot of time working on contracts in our own work. I'm always looking for sort of, you know, what, uh, what leverage do we have and what is the motivation to, um, uh, meet the goals of a contract or the scope of a contract? Um, as I understand it, you know, this is a, um, sort of a cooperative agreement, right? These are, uh, groups coming together towards a, a goal of increasing local hires, increasing veteran, veteran hires, um, increasing hires and developing workforce amongst, uh, graduates of our local high schools. Um, uh, the thirty-five percent is a, is a goal, right? And we're going to measure, um, our progress towards that goal. If we, um, are falling short of that, there's collaboration to try to fill that gap. Um, I'll, I'll ask you a question, um, uh, Ms. Farrell Harrison, uh, because I, I, I think I previously asked you the question of what if like nobody even tries, right? What if we fall short and no one's even trying? I think we do have sort of a way out. And if you can point us to the language for that, you know, way out, if, if no one's even trying. Um, but the other end of that is this is a five-year term. So at the end of five years, um, if we say, hey, this didn't achieve the goals that we had for it in terms of workforce development and local hires, council at that time can make a decision, um, related to whether this, um, agreement is, is achieving the goals. Um, Ms. Farrell Harrison, I, I couldn't find the, the language you were referring to earlier in terms of like, if, if no one's just cooperating, then we're t- failing terribly, uh, uh, what is our sort of standing there?
So I mean, uh, just to make sure I'm following and. So I mean, just to make sure I'm following, and this may be more of a Kim, but I think what you're saying is if if there's just, if, if we're working with the trades, but you know, there's just a decision that, you know, there's not going to be participation and there's no referrals, some, like a worst-case scenario, you mean? In terms of-
Yeah, yeah, I don't expect it to happen, but you know, it could, yeah.
In terms of complete and absolute non-performance, um, Kim, I must mean that there's, that, that means we're violating. At that point, the agreement that's been negotiated with the um, with the Trades Council as, is, is not, is in a default status, I would assume, as a whole, right? If there is no attempts, there is a complete disregard for the agreement, and we're not getting, we get zero local hires. Then I think at that point, the agreement's been violated in its totality, no?
Yeah, the, you know, lots of agreements provide for good faith efforts. Um, for example, when you contract with, with a realtor, you're, the realtor is contracting to make a good faith effort to market property. They're not guaranteeing you that they're going to sell it. But you have the right to terminate the agreement if they don't make that good faith effort. And that's the same thing that we have here. So they are required to make a good faith effort to not only accom- accomplish the 35% goal, but the other goals and requirements that we've included in the agreement. And if they fail to do that, then we would have the right to terminate for breach.
Got it, yeah, thank you, hope that was helpful.
I'm sorry, since that is-
It was for me.
Same question, where specifically in the agreement does it say that?
Excuse me, um, uh, just wait a second before you ask another round of questions, because uh, Councilmember Gamaros hasn't, we haven't heard from him yet, he has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a few questions I'd like to ask the staff. Um, in regards to trying to meet a 35% local hire status, we have the ability to conduct pre-job fairs before any type of job starts, correct? And that contractor would have the ability to bring in any of their subcontractors and notify all the local schools and any hiring halls or anything like that locally to bring in these individuals, is that correct?
Yes.
And this is a common practice, that's practiced throughout many communities that have project labor agreements and community workforce agreements, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the wages that these individuals could earn are wages that would give them the ability to actually live in a community that they work in, is that correct? In other words, purchase a home, to better, to better state it.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, that's why these agreements are um the, popular, if you will, in terms of just creating that pathway to livable wage and being able to become a homeowner and have that career path established through a program like this.
So then my understanding is the real intent here is not to try and cut somebody out from having the ability to bid on a project, but it's more to enable a construction worker or someone who maybe doesn't have a college degree to be able to provide for their family, to live in a community that they want to live in with a wage that would produce such effects, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the way I mentioned the community aspect of the agreement. Therein lies the, the actual essence of the agreement is to enable for that to happen.
And, and we do have a provision already put in place that anyone such as Bob's Concrete can come in and bid on a project, be awarded that project, and work under the project labor agreement or community workforce agreement and be able to successfully bid, is that correct?
Yes, yes, and it's been done in many, many cities and in many large projects.
So no contractors, no contractors would be excluded from this, is that correct?
No one's excluded.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
That, that was really, those were really good, I would just want to say.
It was reminiscent of you, Mayor.
Very good leading questions. Councilmember Harper, you, you, you have the witness.
I just want to know where in the agreement it says there's a good faith effort or any default, I don't say default provision. I'm just curious. And I, I like Arliss Rent, like Arliss Reynolds, I, when I write a contract and do a contract, I have an easy out where, you know, either it's a 60-day notice or a 90-day notice, even if it is a five-year contract. Um, if, if they're really not performing, it keeps you out of a legal battle of trying to prove a default. And uh, so I'm just curious where it's specifically, I couldn't find it, I looked for it, too. I couldn't find a specific provision.
Good faith. The good faith effort is required in the provisions specifically that relate to the 35. It specifically provides that they shall make a good faith effort to meet those numbers. There are a number of enforcement provisions throughout the agreement, including um, the, the specific city rights, um, including our management right and all rights conferred on us by law, which include our right to enforce the agreement. There are several different provisions um that in fact allow us to terminate, delay, or suspend portions of work on projects or um remove projects from the um agreement. Uh, it's a 20, I'm sorry, I've got 51 pages in front of me, I'm looking for the specific provision uh right now, but those are just a number of the examples in, say, uh, paragraph 9.1 is just an example, I'm sorry, 9.2 is one example.
So I, I guess I understood it from Lauren, I guess there's, I, I, yeah, I can't find it. So I would have made it more clear, I would have had, you know, termination provision and a heading and said, here's where I can terminate, why I terminate, that's what I would have expected. Fair enough. Yeah, and I, to Lauren Mars's question, no contractor is excluded as long as he has a certain number of union workers, correct?
Is this question directed at me?
No.
Oh, please, this is staff. Uh, so nobody has to have a certain number of unionized employees, per se. There's a core employees provision, the contract, that talks about the process by which um employees are brought on the job, core employees of the contractor, and then um the union hall employees. But there's no minimum or something like that, if that's what you mean. And so again, nobody's precluded from, from bidding or participating. And many of the large contractors that we already do business with, do business with many other cities, including those that have CWAs and know how this works and operates.
So completely non-union contractor can, can bid this product and is on full footing with any other union contractor?
They would just, right, they just have to participate in making sure that they're bringing in employees from the crafts as the agreement um prescribes.
Non-union, non-union pay, none, none dues, nothing. I, I guess I'm confused by the contractor, so.
All right, all right, you have any other questions?
No, that's it, all right.
All right, good, let's hear from the public. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item, Madam Clark?
Oh, yes, we have quite a few, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good, let's hear from them.
Our first, our first is a phone number and it's ending, it starts with 1657 and ends in 720.
All right, you have the floor.
Good evening, uh, my name is Ray Barca. I'm the Executive Director for the Engineering Contractors Association here in Southern California. Good evening, councilmembers. Uh, on behalf of the members of the Engineering Contractors Association, we respectfully urge you to vote in favor of approving the Community Workforce Agreement for the City of Costa Mesa. We feel this would be a positive step forward for the city and for the contractor community, which brings decades of experience and expertise to the types of projects being considered. Additionally, the contractor field staff represents some of the highest skilled and quality-trained craft workers in Southern California. Our field staff performs the safest and most efficient work in the construction sector today, which has never been more clearly demonstrated than during the last two years of the COVID-19 crisis. Just as important, our field staff is comprised of your constituents and neighbors. The CWA will provide them an opportunity to work on local municipal projects without excessive vehicle miles traveled. In addition to the local resident hire, the agreement provides for veteran preference hire and recruitment through the Helmets to Hard Hats program. It also provides a local hire for disadvantaged individ- individuals. This agreement will provide a career pathway for young men and women in Costa Mesa via joint labor management apprenticeship training programs. It will give them an opportunity to uh, uh, access a middle-class income, family health care, and defined pension benefit plans. The CWA enhances the value of your local workforce without an increase in labor costs as it is still performed under the state-required Public Works prevailing wage laws that are already in effect. As leaders in the construction industry in Southern California, we wish to express appreciation for your hard work on this matter and once again urge your support for the Community Workforce Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, who, who's up next?
Next speaker is Matthew Rudolph.
Mr. Rudolph, you have the floor.
Matthew Rudolph.
So press star six or unmute yourself, Mr. Rudolph.
Oh, they left, okay. My expert is Luis Alman.
Uh, Mr.-
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, Mayor Stevens and councilmembers. Um, speaking tonight on behalf of, and you received a letter issued today of the Orange County Labor Federation. We represent over 250,000 hard-working men and women across Orange County, and we send 100% in encouraging you to vote for this agreement. This agreement not only will be good for Costa Mesa in the hundreds of millions of dollars of new development that it will bring and infrastructure spending, but it also ensures that the workforce that we hire for this project is homegrown, local, with veteran uh preference, and also for help for disadvantaged youth individuals. So we encourage you to support this project strongly. This is a good step for Costa Mesa, it's a good step for the county and any project that employs local, homegrown talent that also provides a decent path to the middle class is a project that we should support. So we encourage you to support this for the present of Costa Mesa, but also for the future of Costa Mesa, because we know that having a college degree is not the only path to the middle class. And projects like these provide that path. So we encourage you to strongly support this project, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robert Smith, please.
Robert Smith, you have the floor. Uh, Mr. Smith? Go, are you, are you there? Press a star six. Okay, let's move on to the next one, and then, Mr. Smith, if you get it together, you can come and talk uh later.
Yeah, okay, then next speaker is phone number ending in 337.
337, you have the floor.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Eric Kristen, I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. We are a statewide organization that was formed 23 years ago by union and non-union construction firms solely to oppose project labor agreements and the discrimination, bigotry, and waste that they represent. What I'm going to do are pose questions that I hope councilmembers that seem to be concerned and fancy themselves as concerned about wage theft, diversity, equity, there seems to be at least one on the council, questions that they could pose to staff, which staff failed to present in the disingenuous and prejudicial presentation that they made to the council on their PLA presentation. Following questions are these, how many public entities in Orange County, how many cities have PLAs in place? The answer is two, why are these so unpopular in a county as large as Orange County? Of those two, two cities, what have the results been of their local hire goals? And they are goals, there's no incentive to actually meet them. Locals considered Riverside, Orange County, Los Angeles County, that's not local. What have their results been? Why does your project labor agreement, staff disingenuously claim that everyone can bid this? And the leading questions that were posed by a council member said, can everyone bid this? Yes, technically, everyone can bid this. They're limited to five of their own workers, so I have Kellex Electric that employs 2,000 electricians, which, by the way, doesn't bid Port of Long Beach projects anymore because of the PLA. So again, staff has shown to be wrong on that issue. One of the major subcontractors in California will not bid the Port of Long Beach projects because they discriminate against their workers. How? They're limited to only using five of their core workers. If it's a 100-man job, they're going to be working with 95 people they have no relationship with. Please ask staff why there's a provision in the PLA that forces a non-union, those five non-union employees to pay into union health, welfare, and pension plans that require five years of vesting. That's wage theft, they already have their own plans, they already have their own benefits. Why would you include that in a project labor agreement if your intent is to increase your bidders and not decrease them? To not exclude people, but include them? That is an implicit attempt to discriminate against a non-union worker who already has his own benefit program. Why is that part of the PLA? Why did staff meet with non-union state-approved apprenticeship programs and exclude them from your PLA? Are there any other groups that you willingly exclude from working for you? It's explicit in your PLA that you cannot be a young man and woman in a non-union apprenticeship program, which you have right in your county, right in your area, and you cannot work on your project, that's explicit discrimination. Why did staff negotiate that into the project labor agreement? I would like to have that question answered. It's unbelievable, what other group do you discriminate against other than non-union apprentices? Why are you-
That's it, sorry, you, you, your three minutes are up, thanks. Next uh speaker.
Russell Johnson, please.
Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens and members of the council. My name is Russell Johnson, I'm speaking behalf on tonight of the Associated Builders and Contractors Southern California Chapter. Uh, first, I want to thank your staff for taking time for meeting with us and to look at the proposed language we submitted back in December to include all apprentices and to have an inclusive uh community workforce agreement and not exclude any apprentices. Uh, secondly, we did uh find out uh late, um, uh, later this, earlier this month, that in late December, uh, San Diego Association of Government, Sandag, had language which allows and includes all apprentices from state-approved apprenticeship programs. So it's an inclusive agreement, and it's not exclusive to just union apprentices. We urge that your council take an inclusive approach, allow our apprentices to walk in the front door and participate in your Costa Mesa workforce. Don't shut the door on us so that we can't even get in the building. Let our apprentices get a chance to work. Also, I want to just highlight a few things about apprenticeship that exist in prevailing wage public workshops today. According to the standards of uh apprenticeship programs, they're required to recruit, they're required to go out, they're required to work with high schools, they're required to work with veterans, they're required to go out and get people to enter their programs. So a lot of these pathways have existed for many years, for as long as these programs have been in existence. So our apprentices are men, they're women, uh, they're from disadvantaged communities, they're veterans. They meet a lot of this criteria, and yet the agreement is keeping them uh from participating. Our program is what's called a unilateral apprenticeship program. Your CWA is presented, only allows joint uh union apprenticeship programs. And for us, we're just asking for an inclusive agreement, we're asking for your council to make a simple change. We've got language that worked for Sandag. We think it can work for Costa Mesa, and you can have a better agreement that doesn't show it out, shut out our apprentices that currently live in Costa Mesa or in Orange County. So please uh make an effort for an inclusive agreement, thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Vetter.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, my name's Michael Vetter. I just wanted to touch on a few points that uh were spoken about earlier. Strictly, uh, the wordage used in, in some of the legal jargon about skilled and trained workforces and um being unionized, um, I'm a part of the ABC SoCal chapter who is state-certified as a skilled and trained workforce and a veteran and lived in Costa Mesa. I think that this PLA is going to exclude and limit the amount of bids and apprentices that are going to be able to work there. I also am an estimator for a mid-sized electrical company, and when we have uh projects that come across our desks at our PLA, we, we can't bid them. It increases the, the value, increases the cost and the price of these projects. Um, I know one councilmember said that we're limiting uh the PLA to uh $500,000 plus or a million dollars plus for these projects. And nowadays, that's anything, any um- And nowadays, that's anything. Any prevailing wage project is going to be over $1 million. So you're going to be excluding multiple contractors who are hardworking, veteran-owned contractors that, you know, are just looking to have a fair bid. I also believe that it's going to be limiting the amount of proposals that are received strictly because on a, on a common sense basis, if you're selling your house, for instance, and you can only use one realtor, you are going to limit the amount of people that can see your house. I think that is going to increase the cost for Costa Mesa. It's going to decrease the quantity and quality that you guys are going to receive. I also think that putting this PLA in agreement is, is going to be bad for Costa Mesa in the fact that you know, you have many people that attend ABC that are, that live there and aren't going to be able to work on that project. I've been in the trade for about 20 years, and just because the home base or the shop is located in Costa Mesa doesn't necessarily mean that the workers are going to be there. I've had jobs right down the street from my house, and my, the owner of the company has sent me to LA. So saying that saying that you're going to put a PLA that's going to increase the chances of having workers from Costa Mesa isn't factual, and there's no data that supports that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Who's next?
Paul Moreno.
Mr. Moreno? Mr. Moreno?
I'll come back to.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Hi, Mr. Moreno. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just want to say real quick, thank you to the ones, you know, on, on putting this community workforce agreement, you know, together and moving it forward. I was gonna, I wrote a letter, but I'm just going to speak from the heart on this to Ms. Reynolds. I really don't think we'll have an issue. We have in Costa Mesa over 53 iron workers who live there. If we get this thing across, believe me, I'm going to have 53 members who are so happy to be working in their own city and not having to drive to LA or other areas to go to work. So we will meet those thresholds at 35%. To Councilmember Harper, the iron workers are the only state-accredited apprenticeship. So for any prevailing wage project, the non-union comes to us to get our apprentices, and we supply apprentices to them. Also, we have other agreements, Anaheim, Garden Grove, Santa Ana. We have a probably more non-union getting these projects than union. And, and, you know, we are, we are still supplying the membership them to get the job done. So I don't see no issues or no problems with any other contractor trying to bid work. There's, there, that's ridiculous. You're getting your big, you're the best bang for your buck with us. And Mr. Harper, I invite you to our apprenticeship school. I'd like to give you a tour and why you're benefiting your constituents with this agreement on, on getting the best skilled and trained workforce that is out there. So I'll be reaching out to you and inviting you to come take a tour of our school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Who's next?
The next speaker is Wendy Lee, and then after Wendy Lee's will be Kim Hendrix.
Okay, Ms. Lee's.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I appreciate Councilmember Harper's comments and good questions. I also appreciated the comments by Mr. Vetter and Mr. Johnson talking about the disadvantage or how the discrimination in their particular apprenticeship program. I've been a resident at Costa Mesa for almost 50 years. That means that I'm a taxpayer. And I look at this as being added bureaucracy, added administrative time that is, is unnecessary. You talk about the community benefit, and yet I know that, that the unions, they can go to the high schools and recruit apprentices, or they can go to the junior colleges, or they can reach out to the veterans. I do not think that our city needs to pay extra money for the administrative of this, of the PLA, because your main job is to keep us safe. That is, this is not anything that, that, that I want to see, and I, I know I speak for many others, that, that we need to make a commitment to for five years. We need to focus on keeping us safe, keeping our city clean, and, and not encumbering us with another task administratively. A few minutes, we're going to talk about Fairview Park and that consultant who's asking to oversee that project. And I have, we have some concerns as far as how that money will be spent and how the money has been spent. And so going into a recession that were, you know, inflation, we have to be very careful, and I just, I support these other people that would like to see amendments to the agreement that would, that would not exclude them. And I just don't think that this is something of a true community benefit. Not for the greater community, community of Costa Mesa. I think that recruitment can happen in another way and, and just keep it as it is.
Second warning.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now Kim Hendrix.
Thank you. I would like to say that I agree with Ms. Reynolds about Fairview Park being in this project list. This list is for trades of construction and building, and these three projects don't involve any of this at all. And in fact, this is a nature park that needs specialized biologists, archaeologists, and I'm concerned that being on this list is actually going to prevent the community from participating in the restoration of native habitat for Aura 58. There's also a Fairview Park master plan that says once, I mean, really, we need the overall master plan for Fairview Park done. Okay, the city really has been dragging its feet for years on this. But please take these three projects out. I think it actually, listening to the people tonight, it seems like we would be having less quality of building and construction in Costa Mesa. These unions can go recruit. They're on their own. I don't think we do need more bureaucracy. But these three projects don't belong here. They don't fit any of the construction projects. And they would require a vote from the people in Measure AA. And I'm afraid they might even constrain the public from participating. So please remove those three projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
The next speaker is Andre Ivan Ramirez, and then after him will be Doug Mangione.
Mr. Ramirez, then Mr. Mangione on deck. Go, please. Mr. Ramirez? I see you there. So you just need to do star six or unmute yourself. Okay, let's go to Doug Mangione, and then after he's done speaking, Mr. Ramirez will give you another try. Mr. Mangione.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you got me coming in?
You're good.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing us to speak on this issue tonight. I am showing support for the community workforce agreement on the agenda. You know, we all know assuring local residents are able to participate in local public works projects benefit the city by having tax dollars being spent on city projects paid to local residents who spend that money in local businesses. Also, by hiring local Costa Mesa and Orange County residents, you're reducing the time they spend driving from job to job, which reduces the amount of pollution that gets, that gets expended on these long commutes. And as veteran hiring, I am the product of, of veteran hiring. I got back from Vietnam 50 years ago, longer than most of us on, on there alive. But I was back there. I went to Coast College for two years. You're a beautiful city. In that school, I found that IBW had veteran hiring preferences going on at that time. And I went down and I found the Brotherhood of Electrical Workers changed my life. I, I lived in the county. I, I raised a family. I had six children. I bought a house, and I never had to worry about healthcare. I never had to worry about if my children were sick, were they going to get taken care of? Did I, was I going to stiff the hospital? No, I had, I had health benefits, and, you know, if I wasn't having so much fun at city council meetings, I would retire, and I'd have a good pension going on right now. But these things are important, and it's the only way that you can guarantee on a public, on a public works project. You can't guarantee local hire without a, a project labor agreement. It's our job. We will contact our members. We will make sure IBW makes sure we monitor it ourselves to make sure you're getting local residents and getting veterans on those projects. We have plenty of people living in these cities, and we can get them there. And I know one person mentioned Helix Electric, big, large, non-union company, but they're out of San Diego. We've done projects, public works projects. We've done certified payrolls on them. And maybe 40, 50 electricians on each one of the jobs, not one came from Orange County. Most were coming from San Diego, some from Antelope Valley, none from Orange County. So we can produce this. We can make it happen. Our members will benefit, and your city will benefit. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ramirez, are you able to get off mute?
I don't think they're able to. So the next person will be Dash Johnson, and then after that, Office of Supervisor Foley.
Mr. Johnson, and then we'll go to Supervisor Foley's office. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, you have the floor. You're off mute. You just need to talk. We can't hear you. Okay. All right. Well, anyway, let's move to our next one, and that's Council, or sorry, Supervisor Foley's office.
Hi, Mayor Stevens and members of the City Council. This is Alex Runagi, a policy analyst from Supervisor Foley's office. I emailed you a letter from Supervisor Foley earlier today, but I'm just going to read a couple portions of it, because I think it's important. So as you know, Supervisor Foley strongly supports this community workforce agreement that's before you, and here's the letter. As an Orange County supervisor and former Costa Mesa mayor, I'm writing in support of the community workforce agreement. This agreement includes hiring provisions that prioritize Costa Mesa residents and veterans, providing them a pathway to middle-class careers. As you know, this promotes prosperity for our entire community, creating, creating employment opportunities for our residents, who will in turn spend their hard-earned wages shopping, dining, and supporting businesses and schools here in Costa Mesa. Supervisor Foley is particularly excited about the agreement's provisions for helmets-to-hard-hats program, which will provide a direct opportunity for veteran employment. As the sister of a veteran, Supervisor Foley uniquely understands the struggles that our veterans face, secure employment after defending our freedoms abroad. And so she's very excited that you included this in your, in the agreement. And finally, the 21st century economy requires us to meet the growing demand for a high-skilled workforce and well-paying career opportunities that don't require college degrees. This agreement will allow the city of Costa Mesa to ensure that our residents have access to these important programs, allowing them the opportunity to achieve the American dream through a middle-class income, family healthcare, and defined pension benefit plans. Ensuring the dignity of work in our community is critical and cannot be more important in these tumultuous times that we face. I respectfully urge the City Council to approve this community workforce agreement and promote economic opportunity for future generations of Costa Mesa residents. Thank you for your consideration, and as always, our office is here to help however we can, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the comments. Who's, who's next?
Natalie Rubacalva, and then after Natalie, Tim Steed.
Ms. Rubacalva, you have the floor. Oh. We can't hear you, Ms. Rubacalva. Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Good evening, Mayor Stevens, Stevens and members of the Costa Mesa City Council. My name is Natalie Rubacalva Garcia. I am the immediate past Chair of the Orange County Fair Board, which also serves as an economic engine for the city of Costa Mesa. I'm here to respectfully request that you vote in favor of the community workforce agreement proposed today that includes the benefits of hiring local residents and other priority groups to reform capital improvement projects in the city of Costa Mesa. The benefits of this agreement would ensure residents of Costa Mesa and all 34 Orange County cities plus unincorporated areas of Orange County have priority access to work. This community workforce agreement encompasses or describes a local hire as any and all veterans, regardless of residence, graduates of Costa Mesa high schools, regardless of residence, disadvantaged individuals with preferences first for Costa Mesa residents, and those residing within Orange County, which may include formerly homeless individuals or referrals from nonprofit organizations such as Chrisless, Orange County, which I actually have a personal relationship with as a member of the Orange County Advisory Council, or the Salvation Army. These are very important parts of the Orange County economy and local workforce. The CWA also ensures our local workforce has access to fair or prevailing wage opportunities in the county where they live, work, and play, provide access to a local skilled workforce, and hiring local ensures opportunities for economic development here in Orange County. Our workforce, when employed in the county they reside, also result in a better quality of life. And this I can personally attest to. My father has worked in the city where he lives for the last 41 years, and my husband also has the opportunity to do so. And that helps our family do more and provide more in our community. So I think this just has a great benefit. The Orange County Fair Board has also recently amended a similar agreement called the Enhanced Safety Worker Program, which has worked very well with capital improvement projects that the fair has implemented on our property. Approving this community workforce agreement is particularly important as we enter a recovery year after the impacts of the pandemic. We need to ensure our residents in Orange County have access to good-paying jobs, and contractors are utilizing a skilled and trained workforce located here in Orange County.
Second warning.
In closing, I respectfully request that this council support or approve the community workforce agreement before you today. It really is a win-win for our local workforce and economy. Thank you for your time.
And next speaker is Tim Steed.
Mr. Steed, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Tim Steed, Assistant General Manager of the Orange County Employees Association. OCA represents workers in multiple cities and special districts in Orange County, including our affiliated Costa Mesa City Employees Associations. Public servants in Costa Mesa contribute to the safety and stability of our local communities. These public servants work hand-in-hand with those who build and maintain our community infrastructure. For those reasons and more, that our union is supportive of this agenda item. We've submitted a letter in support that outlines the merits, but I wanted to include additional items. Also want to thank the city staff for your prompt response and acknowledgement in receipt of our letter. The civic tasks covered in this agreement are critical to maintaining the current infrastructure of Costa Mesa, but also for investing in the infrastructure of tomorrow, which are keys to a brighter future. For our communities to be competitive in the diverse economies of tomorrow, there must be quality public investment that lifts our communities up and not engages in a race to the bottom. This agreement invests in our local community through veterans and local hiring preferences, as well as ensuring that public money is not spent on undercutting quality middle-class jobs for these items. And all the eloquent speakers that came before, of course, we want to urge a yes vote on this item, and thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Sam Hurtado, followed by Randy Wetmore.
Okay, Mr. Hurtado, you have the floor. Okay, Mister Hurtado, you have the floor. Do star star six. It's weird. It seems like about every third person has a problem, so I don't know. Uh so.
Randy Wetmore, please.
Randy Wetmore. Maybe you're a lucky one. There you go. Oh, no. Oh, yes. Go.
Okay, good evening, Mister Mayor, council members and all attending tonight. My name is Randy Wetmore, Business Agent for Ironworkers Local Four Sixteen, Orange County. Myself and the local skilled and trained union tradesmen that live in the community. Would like to voice support of the CWA. On the public works projects. Not only will a CWA benefit the city of Costa Mesa. It'll benefit skilled and trained union tradesmen that live in the community. When a dispatch request is submitted to the local for a CWA. Local zip code members are placed at the top of the list to meet the meet or exceed the local hire requirements. Ironworkers are also part of the Helmets to Hard Hats program. That help our men and women that serve. Dar- excuse me, defending our country. Find a career path with a good future. When they return from their duty. A CWA keeps the local tradesmen working in their community without. Having to commute to downtown LA or beyond for work, cutting down traffic, pollution on our local freeways. Council members, I thank you for your time on behalf of the ironworkers and the rest of the skilled and trained union professionals in the community. Vote A on this. We want to hear a yes for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker is Tony De Trinidad and then followed by Dave Everett.
Mister Trinidad. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Tony De Trinidad. With the Painters, now I trade District Council Thirty-Six. And we are also calling in support of the Community Workforce Agreement. This agreement provides career-oriented jobs, not just jobs. So we call in support and we highly recommend that we or the City Council do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Who who's next, Mister Everett?
Yes, Dave Everett, please. Dave Everett, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right, sorry about that. Uh hi, I'm Dave Everett. I'm a thirteen-year Costa Mesa resident homeowner. I'm uh testifying today as uh the representative for the Western Electrical Contractors Association here in Southern California. Uh WICA is a statewide nonprofit organization serving merit shop electrical electrical contractors and their employees. And WICA opposes this government mandated PLA on construction projects. These PLAs are special interest schemes that end open, fair, and competitive bidding on these public works projects. And they've been so controversial that they've actually been banned in half the United States. So. Uh I I believe the council knows this proposal is controversial. That's why they've delayed it twice already and that's why they've renamed this the uh. Community Workforce Agreement as opposed to a project labor agreement, but worse yet, uh this special interest deal would hurt minority contractors. And as documented by Forbes Magazine, minority contractors say these agreements perpetuate the discrimination that has long pervaded construction unions. In an affidavit submitted in court, Harry Alfred, the President of the National Black Chamber of Commerce, said that about ninety-eight percent. Of black and Latino-owned construction companies are non-union and PLA is restrict the use of minority contractors on public projects. Alfred went on to claim that uh or said that claims that a PLA can be a tool to ensure minority construction workers. At businesses are used on a public project, it's a farce. Government-mandated PLAs are opposed by the National Black Chamber of Commerce because almost all minority-owned contracting firms are not affiliated with unions. African-American-owned contracting firms are typically small businesses and employ their own core workforce of skilled construction workers. Who are not unionized and are generally more diverse than construction workers coming from the union hiring halls. And just to jump in for a minute, no one here is saying, you know, the unions, the union is full of racism. It's it's a lot of times these minority communities when they come in. They don't, they're not established and so they don't have this seniority in the union that other communities have here. And so. Uh you know, just to kind of elaborate on Mister Alfred, I don't think he's saying that the unions are a wing of the KKK. I think what he's saying is. Minority contractors just haven't been in the system as long and so. By default, this ends up discriminating. They've become a much larger percentage of that eight out of ten construction workers. And so. I I I've been going off the idea that this is gonna be on fifty-two million dollars worth of work. And so I've been saying that it's gonna cost Costa Mesa taxpayers seven point eight million dollars. It it sounds like it's gonna. Be much closer to ten, sixteen, twenty, uh depending on if you're going with eighty or two hundred or whether you're concluding the administrator costs in there as well. And um as far as the city of Long Beach, uh I'll send you guys all an article that was in the Long Beach Post where. A bunch of minority activists came out and said, uh hey, Long Beach is not meeting their PLA African-American hiring goal. And uh became an issue back and forth kind of between the paper and this group and 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 the council members out there as well. And then just last month, they have a duck pond they're trying to build. They got zero bidders, zero point zero.
Is that the warning or is it mine? Thank you. So who's next?
Madrano.
Ernesto Madrano. Mister Madrano, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mister Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Ernesto Madrano. Representing a hundred and forty thousand hard-working men and women in the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. Um first and foremost, I want to uh recognize and thank the staff. I know we had some robust thorough negotiations over the last. What's been a period of time now. And I want to recognize the hard work that was done. Uh we had some pretty interesting sessions, but the purpose was to find uh common ground to reach. A mutually acceptable agreement and I'm very happy and pleased to say that we did that. Uh with that said, uh you've heard sufficient that information about the programs that we have in the building trades. Uh I'm pretty proud, as a as a United States Marine, I'm very proud of the our Helmets to Hard Hats program where we give direct entry into apprenticeship. And part of the dispatch to provide uh the uh veterans to go to go to work in their own community as well. But I think it's important to talk about the facts here. The fact remains that in the state of California, there's sixty thousand apprentices under the joint. Labor Management Programs, of which ninety-three percent of those are graduated to the journey level. I don't hear the ABC talk about their track record of graduating journey-level folks in their programs. Our programs are very robust. In our jurisdiction of Los Angeles and Orange County, we have twenty-six training centers that cover uh for all fifteen trades. Uh at at various levels here. Uh we have about twenty-four thousand apprentices in Los Angeles and Orange County. Uh probably close to four thousand in Orange County alone. Uh so we've got the workforce. We've got the ability. We've got the track record to provide that workforce. That are all trained through our apprenticeship programs. Uh and so I want to make sure that 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 is very clear and is our joint labor management governed programs, meaning both parties. Establish the track record unlike the arbitrarily unilaterally controlled programs by the employer. So workers have no voice in those programs. And when they graduate, the question really relies is, do they continue to receive. A journey-level wage rate in the private sector and the answer is no to that. With. The track record that we have, let me report on the last report that the uh administrator reported in the city of Anaheim. Where we have a thirty-five percent goal. Uh over the la- that that agreement was passed in December two thousand nineteen. As of the present. The local higher percentage is forty point seventy-four percent. And again, this is the administrator's record here. City of Santa Ana. These the the uh local higher goal here for the city of Santa is fifty point fifty-two percent, which is about a year and a half of work that's been. Done there. So as you can see, we've got the track record to to establish the fact that we can meet the goals of the local hire because we have the workforce. We have the best-trained individual to put in the work at the city and we can provide uh through our dispatch, preferential dispatch for the Costa Mesa residents. High school graduates, veterans, and the apprenticeship readiness program uh uh graduates as well. We have placed one thousand thirty-five of these apprenticeship readiness.
Thank you. That's been three minutes.
Gotta catch you off. Okay, next.
We have Fred Flores.
Good evening, um members of the board. Um and thank you for your time. My name is Freddie Flores with the Hidden Frost Insulators and Asbestos Workers Local Five. And I'm gonna be short on this, but effective. We provide a skill and trained workforce to the contractors and also true veterans that they will be um working in our trades. Uh so please, support this uh CWA and thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Next is Colin User Four.
Colin User Four, you have the floor.
Colin User Four, okay.
Colin User is is off.
Considerable discussion as to whether the numbers in this agreement were guidelines, goals, mandatory, whatever. Even if they were mandatory, there is no guarantee that a single Costa Mesa resident will get a job out of this. You've got a list of over a hundred zip codes that are considered local residents and then that's not even the limitation. You have other groups. That could also be part of of the thirty-five percent. You're basically guaranteeing that. That probably two-thirds will be from elsewhere and we're lucky if we get anybody hired from Costa Mesa. On the contrary, you have the potential. To actually cause Costa Mesa residents to lose their jobs. We already heard that eighty-six percent of the workforce is non-union, only fourteen percent is in the trades. That means that eight the eighty-six percent of the trades that live in Costa Mesa that aren't union will be excluded. Um they, even if they could get a job, um they would have to pay dues. They'd have to go through various and sundry hoops. And I even question whether that's constitutional. There are provisions of this contract that are highly invasive, particularly section three point eight three. Where the contractors would be required to provide personal information, not to the city, but to the trade unions about their employees. That that's just anathema. Um and I you could say, I would say, honestly speaking, you. There's a legitimate argument that you could say, you know what, big business is too powerful. We want to have strong unions to balance that out and we're gonna do what we can to strengthen the unions, because that's what this is about. It's about strengthening unions. There's a legitimate argument. About why unions should be stronger. But if we're gonna pretend that it's about local hires, that's that's just a charade. And um I also question the constitutionality of this. You have a a federal. A a constitutional limitation on interference with one's right of assembly, with one's right of association. This requires workers to associate as members of the union. This also requires workers to pay dues. Which may go for political activities to which they are opposed. That's already been thrown out by the Supreme Court. And you're also looking at Taft Hartley too, but it looks like a way to do an end run around Janus, an end run around Taft Hartley. And I think that's just wrong. Um. There are a lot of provisions in here that are that are just bizarre and they're written. They need to be polished up. But really, at least be honest. Say, it's not a local hire. There's no guarantee of local hire. There's not even, even if it were mandatory that you follow that clause, no guarantee of local hires. No jobs for Costa Mesa residents are guaranteed by this. No jobs for Costa Mesa residents would.
Thank you. Three minutes are up.
Compliance and there'd be no job.
I'm sorry. Yes, we need to go on to the next speaker.
Next speaker is Adam Thornton.
Mister Thornton.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Thank you. Uh my name is Ah. I'm a I'm a local non-union commercial plumber. Uh I've I've worked for a company that has a very upstanding. Uh relationship with the city of Costa Mesa. They've been around for forty years. We're out of the city of Riverside. I have predominantly worked in your city for the last year. I predominantly spent most of my wages in your city, whether it's breakfast, lunch. Going out and about. I think it's uh completely unfair and completely biased in which these. Union members are saying that ABC SoCal is unskilled, first of all. Secondly. I just think it would be, I just think it's unfair and I think you guys would be losing a great deal of potential workers. And business coming to your city based on the fact that it should be a union. Strictly union uh agreement. I think, like I said, we have. Our our company has very strong relations in your community, whether it be with the city or with local business owners. I'm not even, I don't even live in the city of Costa Mesa. I've sat on hold all night tonight because I want to voice my opinion on it because I love the city of Costa Mesa. I love what you guys do for us and I'm not in support of this. Because I think it'll do not only us, but also Costa Mesa residents a great uh disservice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is. Sergio Gonzalez.
Mister Gonzalez, you have the floor.
Hello, Mayor Stevens, City Council Members. My name is Sergio Gonzalez. I'm a ABC student. My third-year electrical trainee. Uh I went into this industry looking forward to be an electrician, work and provide for my family. So I originally tried to join the union, which they have these labor uh contracts. And it was hard. They put you in the books. They put you in what's called the hall. It's very difficult to get in there. It wasn't easy. I live here in Santa Ana. And it was, it was very hard. I couldn't get in. And I talked to other friends that now go to school. With me and also work in an electrical company uh with me. And they also couldn't get into these uh companies that were supposed to be local. It was very difficult. It turns out there's a a list mile long of people trying to get in. So it it. I'm afraid that's gonna happen with you guys out in Costa Mesa. And I have a lot of family members and friends that go to Costa Mesa. And and they also are probably gonna go through the same thing if they apply for it. So I just urge you guys to just reconsider this and and look at the numbers first, see. What will benefit your. Hello?
Yeah, we can still hear you.
Okay, uh just see what would benefit the most and and these things, they they just seem unfavorable. Towards other electrical companies that are out there that could do the work just as fine, do it just as well. And probably cheaper, a lot cheaper actually. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Smith.
Mister Smith. He's, he he came back. I mean, he's trying. I guess we'll, let's not forget about him, but let's move on to the next speaker.
Next speaker is Haytham Awane.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Mayor Stevens, City Council Members. My name is Haytham. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yeah.
My name is Haytham Awana, part of uh Ironworkers Local Four Thirty-Three. I'm an apprentice for them uh and I'm a longtime resident of uh Costa Mesa. Uh my son goes to Victoria Elementary School. Uh I take him to uh Vulcan Skate Park. He's eleven years old. Oh, right, right across the street from Orange Coast College. Uh I've been to Orange Coast College before I joined uh Ironworkers Local Four Thirty-Three. And uh I just want to say I'm in support of this uh of this uh. You can call it project labor agreement. You can call it uh uh community workforce agreement, whatever you want to call it. I. I honestly call it the American dream. Uh instead of uh driving two hours, three hours into traffic and then uh. Working ten, twelve hours and then driving three or four hours in traffic to get home to my family, only to eat dinner, take a shower and go to sleep. Not being able to see my ten-month-old son grow up and uh take his first steps and uh be able to watch him uh say his first words. Because uh I'm trying to provide for my family. Uh I I'd like so much to to be a part of my community and build. With my community and be able to take my son to baseball practices and basketball practice and take him skateboarding, not only on the weekends. But uh but every single day, you know, have dinner uh at a decent hour and be able to provide for them and be able to be there for them and. And uh I think this uh community workforce agreement will help with that. I think uh I think we're we're uh we're the most organized. Uh we're the most safest in planning. Uh uh we with the utmost integrity and the best-trained individuals. And, uh, and I urge each one of you council members to come over to the city of La Palma, where, uh, where our apprenticeship school is and see how we work and see what we do, see what we learn. And, uh, and you won't be let down. Like, uh, like Paul Moreno said, you get the best bang for your buck. Unions are already strong. It's not about making our union strong, we're already strong. This is exactly about local hires. And, and that's why, uh, that's why I'm, I'm in full support of this community workforce agreement. Uh, I'm a longtime resident of Costa Mesa, my mother's a longtime resident of Costa Mesa, my grandparents are longtime residents of Costa Mesa. I'm a Palestinian-American Muslim who is a hard-working, uh, American, who, who, who married a Caucasian woman and we raised two children together. And, uh, we love our community and, uh, we're, we're tax-paying,
Thirty seconds.
Productive members of society and we just want to be a part of our community. So, uh, I, I urge you guys to, to, uh, to be in support of this, uh, community workforce agreement. Thank you for your time and thank you for having me here.
You're welcome, thank you for your comments, who's next?
The next person is Edward Ramirez, followed by Aaron Viveros.
Hello.
Ramirez, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, um, good evening, everyone. I've been sitting here listening to the whole, um, webinar and, um, everyone that has spoken up until now or is going to speak, they all have great points. Each side, both sides. And I'm, I'm a nun. I'm a, I'm a local private marriage shop, electrical apprentice worker. And basically what I want to say is everybody is trying to survive here. Everybody's trying to survive, everybody's trying to make ends meet, everybody's trying to spend time with their family. You know, we all have the same problems, um, whether we go to a different city to work or the same city. And that's the thing, we all have the opportunity to actually have that job, to go to that job site, to have that chance. And that's, that's what I want to really focus on is not to take that away from anybody, not to take it away from the person who's working union or non-union. Give us all the same chance to actually make that bid or work that job site or spend time in our community and work in our community as well. And that's, I'm, I'm just urging you not to go with this CWA or PLA. And that's just where I stand and I hope that you can give us all a fair chance. Thank you and thank you for the time.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is Aaron Viveros.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Viveros, you have the floor.
Uh, I just thank you all for the time to share, I wasn't going to share today and I just felt the need, um, to kind of speak my voice. And, uh, we, I am the community outreach coordinator for associated builders and contractors. So I do all the public relations and outreach. And what I hear over and over is local hire and reaching out to the community and reaching out to the local schools. Uh, we are part of, I go to nonprofit meetings in both Long Beach with the Community Action Partnership Alliance. I also am part of the, um, Placencia Collaborative. We attend those monthly meetings, uh, regularly to reach out to the community that are the nonprofits. We reach out to, um, uh, Second Chance Youth, like Job Corps, Youth Build, all these different programs out there to, to provide, uh, jobs in the local area and all through Orange County. Uh, so we're out there on a regular basis, coming out to schools and talking to teachers and talking to, uh, counselors and talking to CT programs. One of the largest, uh, programs throughout, um, all of California is the Bitta Program. They've got forty-three schools throughout California that we reach out to. We've hosted, uh, Zoom meetings, reaching out to these local organizations. And we don't need that funding in a project to be able to do that. We do that alone just to reach out and better our communities. And I just wanted to say that we do reach out to our local residents and we do have many apprentices that are in the Orange County, um, area. A lot of them were in school today and couldn't actually speak. Uh, but definitely we oppose this, uh, we believe that it should be open to all, uh, not just, not just to union. Uh, we believe that everybody should have the right to bid. We live in, we live in a free state, I mean, we live in a free country. Where, you know, I mean, for instance, you have the option to go to Costco and pay a membership, you know, but does everybody have to pay the Costco membership to get groceries? Uh, does that mean that the oranges at Costco are better than the ones at Albertson's? You know, and, and that's kind of the viewpoint that I see and I'm just, thank you for letting me share. And, uh, I appreciate the time that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um, who do we have next?
Andre Ivan Ramirez.
Mr. Ramirez, you want to give it another try?
Yes, sir, can you hear me now?
You sure can, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. I just wanted to say that I oppose this CWA, AKA PLA. Um, I am an apprentice at ABC and, um, this, this CWA will, will prevent me from getting jobs here in Costa Mesa and me being a resident here in Costa Mesa. I was born and raised here, lived here all my life. And, uh, there's just a lot of, uh, um, things that, that I could say just from listening to this conversation that, uh, or the webinar, is that the numbers still don't add up. And, um, the fully unionized, um, organizations, um, as you've heard, they, they are three thousand or a hundred thousand strong. But at the same time, none of them are residents from Costa Mesa or veterans from Costa Mesa. Um, I could still go on, but I just want to keep it short. Um, so far, the program that I'm in has been great and my career is looking better and brighter every day. So I just want to thank ABC too. You guys have a great evening.
Looks like Robert Smith, are you able to speak now?
Mr. Smith.
I, I don't know, I've tried ten times, uh, hopefully could you, can you hear me now?
We sure can, thank you for your persistence.
Oh, yes, uh, my name is Robert Smith and I'm the political director for the Painters and Light Trades Movement District Council Thirty-Six, Southern California. And I would like to thank the mayor and, and all the folks on the, on the council and also everybody's called in from both sides of this argument. But what I would like to say is this point blank. When people say the numbers don't add up, I'm hearing that from the other side. What doesn't add up is the graduation, lack of graduation rates from the ABC and AGC programs. They just don't graduate anybody. Numbers don't lie, they're real. We, we graduate tons of people. A, we have people that live in the community, the last speaker said, we don't have anyone there. Uh, I bet you we do, bet you we got a lot of folks there. And it comes down to the thirty-five percent. Those thirty-five percent of those people will, will be, when there's not a job, they'll be working for a contractor that in, in Costa Mesa. And if they're a painter and there's no paint work on those projects, those folks that we took in from those areas may be working in Santa Ana on a project. That Santa Ana's wanting their thirty-five, or they'll be in Long Beach, but they'll be constantly employed, making the same wage rate. And then they will graduate eventually and, and have a great career in a, in a union with a pension, medical, dental and uplift their, their family and their community. And I thank all of you folks and, and again, everybody here is very passionate of what they say, the other side and our side. But we know what we do works, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Sam Hurtado, please.
Mr. Hurtado.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, I, I can see a lot of tired faces, so I apologize.
No, it's not your, it's not your fault.
Well, I just want to thank you and, uh, Mr. Mayor Stevens and the City Council for allowing us to come before you. Um, I'm Sam Hurtado, a second-generation sheet metal worker with a union that was established in eighteen eighty-three. I'm a second generation and I'm going to give you a little background on how I became one. Uh, I graduated from Cal State Fullerton with the intent of, uh, playing under Augie Garrido to make the major leagues in baseball. Well, a knee injury over at Cal State Long Beach changed that path, which turned into now, um, the second Plan B law school. Well, I got to admit it to law school after I graduated and suffered another injury. It was a heartbreak by the wife that I now mar, I'm married to, big green eyes, hair down to her ankles. And I had to get married to her, so what'd you do for a living, Dad? That's what I'm going to do, thirty-nine years later, here I am as a second-generation sheet metal worker. I'm a business agent for the sheet metal workers. We have, and these were some of the statistics that were argumentative. We have thirty families that reside within your fair, uh, city. Nine hundred families that reside within Orange County. Not six apprentices currently going to our apprenticeship school. Ninety-two apprentices that reside in Orange County. So we have of our two hundred companies that do sheet metal work, which is heating and air conditioning or architectural metals inside and outside. We have forty that are in Orange County that reside and do business in Orange County. So if you say that it can't be done, it's being done. A lot of the things that are, are thrown out there is misinformation. But I'll tell you, this story of mine is, uh, indicative of these families that I just quoted. They all have similar stories. So, um, one of the biggest disturbing things that happened during the recession was seeing all the license plates from Arizona, Texas and people that you knew weren't from this community didn't pay our taxes and didn't, shouldn't have.
Second warning.
Oh, is that, that is.
Well, and let me finish with this.
Last sentence.
We're, we're behind, uh, this all the way. Let's make it a joint effort to, uh, make your fair community, uh, prosper with this, so thank you very much.
All right, I like the Augie Garrido reference, go, go ahead, who's next?
Next speaker is JH nine-nine-eight-three-one.
Okay, JH nine-nine-eight-three-one, you have the floor.
Uh, that's, that's me, I believe, uh, John Hannah, uh, with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. And I'm here tonight to, um, kind of throw up my hands a little bit, uh, the, you know, a lot of speakers, including former council people, uh, were saying, uh, hey, they can't do the local hire. Uh, it's just a, uh, you know, and there were criticisms about it. Well, first of all, where have these people been about trying to incentivize local hire? They haven't, the ABC hasn't. And that's because they don't want it, they don't want to put those restrictions on the contractors. You have a commitment to help your local community and this is the best way. And nobody else has come up with another, uh, idea. This is going to provide environmental benefits. The South Coast Air Quality Management District concluded last year that a skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component and state-certified apprentices can reduce, uh, vehicle emissions and therefore reduce air pollution. The other, the, the ABC mentioned, uh, San Diego, the Sandag Agreement. It's really no different than here, they're only going to be able to use five of their apprentices, their core people, that's it. Uh, and if the non-union companies who want to bid on this, they'll be able to bring five people. If they want to bring their, their, uh, their apprentices, if they're skilled and trained, they can do that. The one thing I, you've been hearing is that there, there won't be bids, there won't be enough bids. Well, the city manager articulated very well that that's not empirically true. And I can say at my community college district, Gracho Santiago, we've had up to half of the bids, uh, be from, uh, from non-union companies. They're storming the gates to try and get the work. And they know that they're only going to get their five core employees, but they're going to get the benefit of skilled and trained workers and apprentices. And that's why they like it, they'll, they'll make their profit and they'll have a good workforce. Uh, I think that the, uh, uh, the, what we have here is, what's your vision for the city of Costa Mesa? Do you want to just let things go? And, or do you want to ensure that there's a process that is going to, uh, increase the, the amount of, of workers who come from Costa Mesa and, and, and adjacent areas? And once you get this going, then that will.
Second warning.
The, the Newport Mesa District and Orange Coast College to develop pre-apprentice programs that will get young people in to jobs which provide healthcare for their families, pensions and a good living wage. And I would urge your, your support for this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah, do we have anybody else?
Yes, this, uh, is our last speaker, Rich Gomez.
Mr. Gomez, bring us home.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you, uh, mayor and city council members. You know, I wasn't going to speak on this, but you know, I'm listening to, uh, everybody going back and forth here. So let me share, I'm going to share just like my brother, uh, Sam Hurtado, uh, did. You know, I, I went to college to myself and then I ended up playing sports, I was playing soccer. I had an opportunity to go play semi-professional, professional tryouts. It just didn't work out for me. So I had to make a choice, my brother was a framer, a union framer. When I came back, uh, to Orange County, where I grew up in, you know, he said, hey, you ought to just get, you know, you like working with your hands, you've worked with me in the summer. He goes, you might as well, you should try getting into, uh, construction, which I did. I worked and I went non-union for twelve years. And I lived check by check. I rented, I only had, I can only afford one car, I was married. And, you know, the thing is here, I, as a non-union worker, was able to work on a PLA project. And let me tell you what this did for me. One, it opened my eyes. I said, I am a hard worker, I'm running a crew of eight to twelve guys. And I said, when I worked on the, on the PLA project, it opened my eyes and I said, is this what I'm worth? Man, I'm worth this much? And I'm only getting paid this much? Why isn't my boss giving me the opportunity to learn, uh, to earn a livable wage and have benefits? I had a business card from a laborer's rep and I made a phone call on the way home after, when that project ended. And I became a union member. I now own a house, have two cars, put two kids through college. What is wrong with this? This is a good community workforce agreement that can benefit member, residents in your community that may be in the same situation as I was or other people. You know, you have to give it a chance, give it a five-year, you have to give it an opportunity for these kids that may not choose to go to college or university. But you, it, it's imperative that we, we give them, what, our membership in Costa Mesa has dropped because Orange County is very expensive. We've lost the numbers to San Bernardino, Riverside County, okay? But you know what? It, it's, I'm just going to, like, I'm going to add it here. Uh, we, we ask you to support the community workforce agreement, thank you for your time.
Okay, um, looks like we have, we're closing the public comment. Um, and then we've got a, a council member that wishes to make a motion, Councilmember Gamaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to accept the community workforce agreement for a five-year term between the city of Costa Mesa and the Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council.
Okay, Councilmember Chavez, do you like, would you like to second that?
I will second the motion.
Okay, Councilmember Gamaros, uh, you have the floor if you'd like to support your motion.
Yes, thank you, I will be brief. I will say that the opportunities that the union has afforded me and my family are uncomparable to what I had before I joined a union. I own a home, I'm able to supply my family with everything that they need to keep a roof over their head. And if it wasn't for the opportunities afforded to me through unionism, I would probably still be living paycheck to paycheck. It's a lot of hard work, I strap my boots on just like the next person every morning. But the same opportunity is there for them like it is for me. And if this is something that people want to engage in, the opportunity is there and nobody is discouraged from trying to get into a union. I would strongly encourage, if you're interested in it, to come and seek out the opportunities that are available. Anybody could reach out to me, I would be glad to direct anyone on something like this. And I'm proud to say I am a third-generation union member, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, would you like to be heard?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, Colonel Gamaros, for your, your brief comments. I will be a little bit longer than brief. There's something that stuck to me for my entire life. When I was senior. When I was senior in high school, Estancia High School, there, there's a tradition where on the last week of school, we have a ceremony for the seniors where they walk around the gym holding a banner the schools are going to. Some schools, like in my team, may not always get representation. Some, because UCI, which I went to, may get four or five kids a class. Some schools, the OCC, get about, about a quarter of the class going to OCC. But there's some kids that don't get to walk around that carousel. In my class, it was a quarter of the kids did not go to a community college or a four-year college. These are my friends, people I went, I went to school with for years. People who know are hardworking, but the school wasn't even meant, wasn't meant for them. People that are good working the hands. And I know that they've struggled a lot more than I have these past few years. Because it's not as easy to find a good paying job when you do not have resources, higher education. And an apprenticeship program is the pathway for a lot of these students to get ahead and have the same test that I have in my life. That is why when I got in council, I was passionate and determined to get some kind of community workforce agreement in place. Because I know there's kids in my old high, high school right now who are in ROP construction, who are learning how to become woodmakers, learning how to do things with the hands. And once they get to high school, there's no set pipeline for them to go to. I want those workers, those future, those, those old students from my high school who live in Costa Mesa to work in Costa Mesa. I want them to have the right to say, when we expand Chinoval Park, that they were a part of that. I want them to say that when we fixed West nineteen Streets flooding issues, they had a hand in that. I want them to say that when we have any capital improvements happening, coasting to a fire station, a police training ground, anything that just comes to me, so I want them to stay proud that they had a hand in doing that. And furthermore, to get a chance to do that with good paying wages, with good retirement, with healthcare. I think it's commendable that we're prioritizing in this direct order current residents of Costa Mesa. Veterans who served their country, who love America so much, they want to die for our country. I want them to come back and know the place of them in this country and in Costa Mesa. After that, any high school graduate of Costa High School who may have been priced out of the city because of lack of good paying jobs. And finally have the apprentices and any Orange County resident. But those first three, current resident, a veteran who loves this country dearly, and any person that, that went to Costa Mesa, that to me is a form of a, of a PLA, but CWA. To ensure we're giving every resident of Costa Mesa with or without college degree, the chance to succeed in life. And for that, I am proud to support this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Reynolds, you have your hand up. We can't hear you.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I think I'm back here. Um, yeah, thank you. I, I was sort of enjoying those passionate statements from my councilmembers. Do you have a request? Would the maker of the motion be willing to remove the Fairview Park projects from the project list in attachment F for the reasons described earlier? Where is he?
That's directed at you, Councilmember Gamaros. Oh, we can't hear you.
Okay, sorry, I, I was on mute. Can, can you restate the request, please?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, the request is to just remove the three Fairview Park projects from the project list.
I think, I think I'm okay with that. Yeah, I think I would be okay with that.
How about the second? That's the second support that.
Given that Fairview Park is essentially a nature preserve, we don't have a lot of action going on. And most of these things are predominantly just preserving wildlife and making sure that, you know, we have the right biologists and stuff. I agree.
Don't we already have exclusions in the agreement already?
No, see, it's, it's, they're included in there. But they are included in, in the project list. The, there's three items.
I'm just trying to figure out why. I don't, I don't think it's going to impact Fairview Park. I'm just trying to figure out why. No, no offense. Is there a concern that, that we're gonna push somebody out or not be able to perform or create an unforeseen cost or something like that?
Um, I, I, well, let's use the Fairview Park Master Plan Implementation, for example. I do think this one is, is essentially not applicable as is. This is a, as Mr. Seth Ramon described, a planning, is that the right word? Planning and, and design for the master plan. So it's probably not applicable as is. The bluff restoration and native habitat restoration. I don't know if we have specific clauses sort of related to sensitive habitats. But I, I, it's just not clear to me that the the, excuse me, the skilled labor is part of this is, is applicable or covers a lot of the provisions that we have. The requirements that we have in terms of agency engagement and archaeological oversight and, and Native American oversight of these projects. There's so many sensitivities. I'm worried about locking us in.
No, you're right. And, and so I'm going to say yes with, with, with the agreement that as long as it doesn't impact construction, that's fine.
I, I agree with, with Councilmember Gamaros if, and staff can clarify this for the later discussion. If it's capital improvement, like example, if it's like a sidewalk and, on, on the park itself, that's separate. I think then like a bluff, a bluff thing or like, you know, protecting the fair sure. And actually, I'm, I'm kind of curious what, what, to hear your brother say about this. Because I personally feel comfortable for like the nature part, but if it's a capital improvement, but you know, the sidewalk, I want to keep that.
So if I can jump in here, I think we might be able to lend some additional info that will help with the decision-making. And so this is also a conversation that staff has had about the applicability of these projects for this list. So I think traditionally we're thinking true bricks and mortar, curbs, gutters, facilities, fire stations, things like that, playgrounds. Fairview Park in and of itself, especially with the ballot measure restrictions, probably doesn't lend itself as neatly and as cleanly to this list. So I think for simplicity's sake, and this is something that I also did give a little bit of a heads up to the Trades Council about, I think it's fair. And given the fact that we have $250,000 in design money, but we'll have to have extensive lobbying efforts to get assistance from federal, state, county sources to fully fund these projects in the future, which will likely take some time, a lot of effort. It, I think it's probably cleaner and a lot more simple without really impacting the value of this list as much because we have so many other great projects on it for us to probably remove them, those three for the reasons stated. In addition to all of the regulatory compliance and the environmental protection aspects of, of the projects as well. And so it'd be very difficult to start parsing out little pieces. So I think it's for simplicity's sake, I think it's best to, to remove those projects. And I think that would still keep the integrity of the CWA and all of the other projects, which are much more consistent with infrastructure and capital improvements.
What do you say, maker?
Yes.
A second?
Agreed.
Okay. And do you have anything else, Councilmember Reynolds?
Um, I'll, I'll just add a couple of comments. I really appreciate all of the emails and, and calls we received today. I see this as a workforce development strategy specifically focused on or prioritizing Costa Mesa residents and graduates of our schools. And I think that's a really, a really great goal. We've talked in, in other projects about, you know, the costs of living in Costa Mesa, the difficulty in getting high-paying jobs. And so I, I feel like this is a, a, a good approach and a collaborative effort between our, our city, the trades and, and schools, our, our school district, Orange Coast College, really to create and, and reinforce a pipeline to skilled jobs with high wages. So a noble goal, it's a goal that I'm behind. I do think the monitoring and, and reporting is an essential part of the goal. And I'll be eagerly looking at those annual reports as we get them. I think I did hear in the comments that Anaheim hit forty percent in year three. So I'll use that as a benchmark. I want to beat that number.
Thank you. Okay, I think the next person that, well, let's go, actually, let's go to Councilmember Harland. And then we'll go to Mayor Protem Mar, Councilmember Harland.
You sure? Mayor Protem Mar had her hand up for.
I know, I know. Look at, like, I look at, I'm running this meeting, Councilmember Harland, so you have the floor.
Well, then Mayor Protem Mar owes me a Girl Scout cookie then. Maybe I, I owe her one. In any event, I, I'll, I'll be supporting this motion. And I, I do want to thank, as Councilmember Reynolds, I just mentioned, everybody who, who participated, whether it was tonight in a very long discussion or, or by sending, taking the time and sending us emails and letters. I mean, clearly this is something that we're, we're taking seriously and there's a lot to consider. But I, to me, it boils down to sort of a simple, relatively simple considerations, whether or not this adds value to our community. And I go back to something I pointed out earlier this evening. In our housing element, we, our community profile provides some demographic data. And, and one data point that has kind of struck me this entire time is forty-seven percent of our Costa Mesa community would be considered low income. And so in the context of housing, that's important. But just in the context of having a, a living wage and being able to afford a lifestyle here in, in Costa Mesa, we need to do more. And so to Councilmember Chavez's point, I really think it's important that we do have a program that's geared towards workforce development locally. And so to me, there's, you know, not just the value of, of developing this workforce, but a skilled and well-trained workforce, one that can earn a good living wage and also assure us that we're going to get a certain quality of work. And so for those reasons, I think that this is an important step forward and I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Mar.
Thank you. Please don't get me any more Girl Scout cookies. Yeah, so, you know, I, I mentioned this the last time we met was as a council that I had the opportunity to speak to many of the pastors in Chelis, specifically about this idea of like why I'm so committed to provide more housing opportunities here. Because it's sort of this, it's this ecosystem, right? Of people, of, of where you live, of where your kids go to school and of where you work. And if you're able to, if we as policymakers are able to keep that ecosystem such that you work close to home, you can contribute more at your kid's school because you live close to home, you can afford to live in Costa Mesa, you can work here, you can spend your tax dollars here, you can go to church here. That, that it is really in the best interest of all of our institutions to foster that ecosystem and, and to continue to reinforce it. So I'm actually glad Councilmember Harland went first because I, I think we're on the same page very much with like, how do we keep all of those things in Costa Mesa? And I also, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Reynolds' emphasis on monitoring and tracking. I think that's really important. I was going to ask some of those questions, but they got answered during the meeting and, and by the city managers previous to this meeting. But that, that's going to be fundamental. And I, I can't wait to publish those numbers, right? To show the community the impact that we've had. And at the end of the day, if it's, I think Raj just said point zero eight percent more expensive because we've got to do some of that tracking, that's point zero eight percent. That's just ending up back in our economy because we're providing jobs for people who are then shopping, working, living, going to church, et cetera, et cetera, here. So I, so I'm, I'm okay with that. I think that that actually, we get far more for every dollar that we put in in terms of community benefit, both in terms of taxes and, and all the intangibles that are difficult to track. So I think this contributes to a better Costa Mesa overall. I want to see it monitored and tracked. I want to be able to publish that data on an annual basis. And then the last piece is just that. I, I think the pandemic has taught us the value of institutions that treat their workers well. So we had this conversation as a related to increased pay for supermarket workers. I have never felt more motivated to make sure that we are, we are finding ways to encourage the fair treatment of our, our workforce. And so having a CWA on the books only, only further reinforces that that's one of our values, that you got, you got to pay people a living wage, you got to treat them well, you got to create opportunities for them. And I want to support institutions that do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harper.
Yeah, I don't think government spending is ever going to improve an economy. Government spending leads to inflation, which is what we're experiencing. Government spending during COVID led to, has led to inflation, and that's obvious. I'm not, and I do appreciate everyone that spoke tonight and appreciate all the speakers, unions included. Just to be clear, my intent is not to exclude anyone, not to exclude any union or anyone locally working here. And I, and I, with everything Manuel Chavez and Lauren Gamaro said, I, I appreciate their passion. I appreciate their love for their union and what it's provided for them. I'm really looking to make sure the playing field's level. And we do offer, you know, an apprenticeship and local jobs. And, and I think there's ways to do that without a PLA. I, I do know that over half the states and the, well, I'm sorry, about almost half the states in the United States have banned PLAs. And it seems like there's just a few cities in Orange County that have them. And when I look at this agreement, I, I still struggle with the, the, the goal versus requirement. And I struggle for the ability for the city to get out of it. I struggle with why we put every project more, more than we had that we could do in the next five years in the agreement when we had the right to add them and could have left some off. So I'm just skeptical of the agreement. I've heard, you know, contradictory comments and, and I'll respectfully say I'm not sure what to believe. But I still, I still default to, if the unions provide so much and if they're so good and they're going to do this stuff anyway, you know, I don't know why I need a PLA and why I'm excluding, excluding a lot of other companies and unions, so, non-union workers, and that seems to be a big number. So for that reason, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I support the motion. I thank you very much for the work on refining the motion. I think it's really good. I thought it was a, a reasonable amendment to take the Fairview Park items off of there, especially in light of Measure AA. I support the motion for several reasons. I just want to cover them. I, I think it benefits the city to have a skilled and trained workforce working on our public works projects. I think we will have a qual, higher quality product that's going to benefit the residents and the visitors of the city. And that could in fact be improve the safety of those projects as well. So that's reason number one. Reason number two is the opportunity for local hire that's been covered by so many people here, including the opportunity, as Councilmember Chavez emphasized, for students in our Costa Mesa High Schools, both Costa Mesa High School, Estancia High School and Newport Harbor High School, who, for, for whom colleges aren't their bag. And so now they have a great opportunity to have a well-paying job and a life of prosperity if they're, if they can be hired in, in through this program. I support it because of, of the opportunity for veterans and the Helmets for Hard Hats Program. I think supporting this motion is the patriotic thing to do. And so that's one of the reasons I support it. I support it for some of the reasons that I, and Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protem Mar said, just the idea that workers who are paid a fair wage and a living wage create a better life and for our whole community. And, you know, this idea that the rising tide lifts all boats and we should really focus on. and we should really focus on companies and enterprises and do business with those that provide those opportunities and that fair living wage. As I look at this, I'll tell you something that was very, very disappointing to me. And I look at these hearings like this as somewhat of a trial. And I've, I've never been a judge, but I've been an advocate many times in trials. And there was one assertion that was made in several pieces of correspondence that were sent to us. And that is that this is going to cost us seven point eight million dollars if we do this, of hard-earned taxpayer money. It's in the form. Many, many people signed their name to that. Nobody backed it up. Nobody backed that up. And it kind of reminds me of some of the things that were out there in the 2020 election, that, you know, that we had a thirty million dollar deficit, which was a false claim. But if you say, if you, if you say something like that enough times in a form letter or in an election or in this world that we have with social media, people start to believe things with no backing and no truth. That was disappointing, and it really undercut the credibility of those who opposed this project, in my opinion. From, from what I can calculate, at zero, at eight percent we'll be paying to administer, sorry, zero, it's eight tenths of a percent, we'll be paying to administer this about twenty-eight thousand a year. You know, and then finally, I'll just say, from a personal note, I do think that there's nothing wrong with supporting strong unions. And I think that our country is better when there are strong unions. My parents were both in unions. My mom was in the Communication Workers Union. My dad was in the Utility Workers Union. And a result, as a result of that, they had a good pension. They lived their life of comfort until their nineties, and they had healthcare till the day they died. So I support this. Let's call for the question.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Harper?
I'm going to say no, and eight tenths of a percent of fifty million is six hundred and forty thousand, just to correct some math. But no.
Eighteen million.
Eight tenths of one percent of fifty million.
Of eight, yeah, but I used.
Yeah, over five years, eighty million, right? That's what we're going to spend. Those are the projects.
Councilmember Harland?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
A proud yes.
Mayor Protem Mar?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Passes six one with Councilmember Harper voting no.
Okay, we've got one more item, new business, item one. Let's gut it out. I think we can make it without a break unless somebody really needs a break.
No, let's keep going.
Okay, let's, let's, let's move forward.
This is the Professional Services Agreement for Biological Management and Habitat Rehabilitation Services at Fairview Park. Presentation by Mr. Dalton, Fairview Park Administrator.
Thank you. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kelly Dalton, and I'm your Fairview Park Administrator from the Parks and Community Services Department. Tonight, we'll be presenting the Professional Services Agreement for Fairview Park. The scope of work for this project includes managing the wetlands and water delivery system, performing vegetation and algae management, mosquito and nuisance control and coordination, biological monitoring and compliance, aerial surveillance program, conducting required habitat monitoring and reporting, and assisting with environmental compliance and reporting. From an ecological context, especially when comparing Fairview Park to other areas, other open space areas, Fairview Park is extremely rich in terms of its biodiversity, historical significance, and its ecological value on an acre-for-acre basis. The park contains five distinct habitat zones. It supports several rare and endangered species, including the Californian knatcatcher, leaf spells of Uriel, burrowing owl, listed fairy shrimp species, and other species of special concern. The park's various habitats supply critical habitat for migratory birds and other resident birds. The park also features protected cultural and archaeological sites, resulting from the locations' historical occupation by Native American tribes. The park is also subject to a number of environmental and regulatory oversight provisions from several agencies, including the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, other regulatory agencies, as well as entities with which the city has entered into mitigation agreements for past projects. One of the key projects of those mitigation projects has been a compensatory mitigation site that was done with Army Corps of Engineers, as well as Phase Two of that project that was done with Orange County Transportation Authority for the wetland and riparian habitat area of the park. So this map just shows a map of Fairview Park, the general location, and some of the primary habitat types within the park. This figure shows specifically the wetland and riparian habitat area, which is the focal area for endemic services, where they will be performed. Includes these, this series of wetland ponds and five different habitat types. Recently, some of the successes observed at Fairview Park include a high rate of native plant establishment and the restoration areas, with most of the restoration zones showing less than one percent occupation by invasive species, a wide variety of rare and endangered species that have been observed in the park. And much of that is attributed to the success of the habitat and plant restoration work that has been done in that area, a reduction in mosquito activity, improved functionality of the water conveyances. And a lot of this is attributed to the efforts of endemic, which have done, been performed over the last several years. Although this is not part of the project scope, specifically, the city also recently completed the installation of new valves and pump facilities at the pump station to improve the operability of the wetland pond system. And this was done in partnership with the city's Public Services Department. Moving on, the, some other successes are reduction in encampment activity, vandalism, trespassing, and reduced damage to the habitat areas thanks to the aerial surveillance program. These innovative applications in aerial monitoring have provided multiple benefits to the city's management of the park by strengthening the city's required habitat protection efforts, increasing operational efficiency and safety of park users and personnel, and enhancing the coordination with vector control staff by providing rapid detection of mosquito habitat conditions. Some of the latest reports for the wetland habitat show invasive plant coverage at less than one percent and a high, exceptionally high diversity of native plants. Due to this rich habitat, the area supports a thriving wildlife community that has been documented over the last several years since the Phase Two project was completed. Additionally, endemic also has a strong record in collaborating with nonprofit organizations such as CN Sage Audubon Society to support bird and conservation research in the park and also supporting the city with a number of research, or excuse me, outreach efforts to educate and generate awareness about the park's unique diverse species and the habitats that support those wildlife species. With that, we move forward to the staff recommendations. The first recommendation is to award a Professional Services Agreement to Endemic Environmental Services, Inc. in an annual amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five for a term of two years with three one-year extension options with CPI adjustments, five percent annual contingency. The second recommendation is to authorize the city manager and the city clerk to execute the Professional Services Agreement and future amendments to the agreement. Now that concludes my presentation. Now open up for questions.
Council, do any of you have questions? Let's, can you, would you please close the, so we could see each other, close the slideshow? Okay. Councilmember Reynolds?
Sorry, of course I, of course I have a question. So a very, very high-level question. Several years ago, we approved a number of budget items for various restoration efforts at Fairview Park. You heard in some of our public comments earlier, sort of interest in progress on the sort of master plan, which I think Cynthia, our previous administrator, was sort of renaming our land management plan. I'm trying to understand how this scope is related to the master plan implementation update and sort of long-term land management plan. I think I understand this sort of two-year contract as kind of a gap until we get sort of that implementation, master plan implementation in place. But can you just describe the relationship between this and the other Fairview implementation plan?
So when you refer to the implementation plan as part of, is that the same thing as the CIP?
Yes, yeah, yeah, the, the Fairview Park Master Plan update, right? Is that what it is? Thank you.
So I think, yeah, there's two different pieces. The master plan update will be sort of a planning level document that will basically include some of those recent projects that we have completed that were not part of that last update in two thousand and eight, I believe it is. So it'll make those additions to reflect, to make the plan account for those prior projects. And then also the, you know, basically set a, set a program for the next ten to twenty years of improvements based on restoration needs, based on capital needs of the park. But this, this piece fits in with that by, it's performing that ongoing rehabilitation of that wetland system, which has been, you know, observed to have a considerable need. And basically, this is to continue the needs of that project because, you know, we're trying to address the mosquito abatement conditions that have been observed in the past. Make sure that the mitigation requirements are fulfilled as part of the arrangements that we have with the Orange County Transportation Authority, as well as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So does that kind of answer your question, or?
Yeah, I think so.
Council, I'm sorry. I think this is more about implementation of what we've already agreed to and making sure that it's in place as opposed to, you know, doing something new with respect to the master plan. I, just based on my understanding of, and working with these, these projects over the last several years.
Yeah, that's helpful. I hadn't thought to look at this before, but I do see that two-thirds of the cost is specifically for the wetlands area. So, okay, just the other question. I was looking at sort of costs for different parts of the scope. Is this, this is a time and materials contract? It did look like one-third of the contract is still sort of ad hoc as opposed to known regular maintenance. And it wasn't clear to me how, there's a lot of the scope that seems to be sort of as-needed support. And I was just curious how we're managing that.
So there is a committed routine, weekly, and, you know, commitment of hours and staff time, labor commitment in the wetlands area. And that's to fulfill both the requirements of the mitigation agreements as well as the observed need of, you know, just based on the emergent vegetation growth in that area. The on-call items, there could be, you know, some wiggle room and some flexibility in those areas. But for the most part, that is based on, you know, a documented, documented pattern over the last four years. And this, this RFP and this scope was sort of, you know, the consensus of what it's going to take to manage the park based on those needs and based on, you know, the needs of the wetlands area specifically.
Okay, but are we paying them on an hourly basis as opposed to delivering specific reports?
Yes and no. I mean, they have required deliverables for monthly reports for, you know, they've submitted to us for, for many years. And then there's quarterly reports and then annual reports that are more tied to those mitigation agreements. But for the most part, yeah, their billing comes in based on the hours that they submit, not necessarily like a, an item that they're producing.
Okay, I'm going to add one more, one more question because I think it may come up during, during comments. And I, I think you're anticipating this. There, there had been some sort of management challenges with the facilities, especially in the wetlands area, right? Basically, since they've been constructed. And I, I think we've heard some feedback from the community about, you know, how are we going to make sure that we're not sort of continuing to make those same mistakes? We've had this contractor working with us, you know, while the wetlands, you know, got sort of out of the conditions that we were supposed to maintain them. So how, what is the confidence that this contractor is going to sort of improve the performance of the wetlands relative to past years?
So I think there's an, you know, an important distinction to the, the project itself. They, endemic has been performing wetland maintenance and, you know, activities out there to manage those wetlands and the functionality of them for many years. But they didn't necessarily design and construct the, the system, you know, the engineered system that went into the park. And so they are key in making sure that the habitat that is out there is supportive of the wildlife that's listed and, you know, consistent with the restoration plan. So they, they are instrumental in making sure that it meets the criteria of the original restoration plan as part of the mitigation agreements. And, you know, so their effort is both the maintenance and the, you know, the rehabilitation of those systems, but also operating the, the wiers, operating the conveyances of the water to make sure it's continually flowing and not creating nuisance, nuisance conditions for mosquitoes. But in terms of the engineering, you know, the original engineering of it, that was, I think, less of, you know, judgment by them, and it was, they were supporting the original restoration design as it relates to the creation of the habitat that will support listed species. So, you know, there, that could be, I think that's been, you know, looked at for some time. But I think part of it is that maybe it was underestimated how much it takes to manage a system as complex as this. And then those, those maintenance costs, you know, and management costs have gone up over time.
I don't know if Ms. Price, you have anything to add? It's been a while since we spent hours on this topic. I'm trying to, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of money on this wetlands area, and I, I know we were still doing some discovery to try to figure out why they were not operating as, as needed, why we had to sort of continue to remove vegetation. I guess I'm, I'm curious if the sort of planned activities as part of this scope is, if it will work, right? Like, are we at a point where we know how to sort of maintain a status quo while we figure out some of those more structural fixes? Or are we still in a little bit of an unknown area in terms of what's creating all of the sort of fast growth and mosquito issues down there?
If I could, yeah, chime in.
Yeah.
Kelly Dalton's doing an amazing job in responding to your questions. And it's accurate that the work of the wetlands is not entirely at, at the responsibility and response of endemic. There's, there's water source, you know, issues regarding the construction and the, the creation of the wetlands areas. And so, you know, we are looking at that in a broader scope where endemic is a pretty key partner to the mitigation and the response of, you know, the wetlands, the vegetation. But the water system itself, he mentioned in his earlier comments that we recently had to fix the valves in the pump station, for example, and working with multiple partners to be able to do that. I think the wetlands' ongoing management will require additional funding sources that we are looking at now. I mean, we're looking at what sort of opportunities we have to augment our efforts beyond just the management of the current wetlands, but the ongoing water source and treatment issues.
Yeah, I'll just jump in to say, this, this contract tonight is not going to be the end-all.
Yeah, I'll just jump in to say this, this contract tonight is not going to be the end-all and be-all, and for sure, there's still going to be a lot more work that will need to be done, a lot more funding that we'll need to bring to bear, and increase collaboration and coordination. So Public Works will still need our public services team, engineering, so it needs to be heavily engaged. A lot of these issues, and of course now under, uh, Kelly with his, um, leadership now in this area, that'll be helpful. But this is what we need to bring forward for the continuation of the great work that we've done. Otherwise, we'll fall, uh, drastically behind. From what I can tell from the past, we definitely had a bit of, uh, uh, let's put it this way, moving forward, we'll have stronger, uh, lines of, um, responsibility, um, who's accountable for what aspects of the work that needs to get done throughout the entire, um, park. And so I think we're in a better place now. We've RFP'd it. There's a clearer line of responsibility, even internally at the staff level. I think we have better lines of responsibility as to which departments are responsible for what. And so, um, I think we're bringing this forward in an attempt to kind of move forward, put some of the issues that happened in the past as a learning experience of, you know, kind of what we need to be focused on going forward and what we need to improve. But this contract will not solve all of the issues, but it will help get us on the path to greater compliance with the regulatory agencies, building on the great work that we've done thus far, and using basically the best vendor that we could get, which is endemic, with, uh, strong leadership, much better internal coordination, so that we can move forward on a path to a better, sustainable, a much more productive environment there, where we're not out of compliance and pointing fingers. So I think we're, this is, uh, an improvement from what we've had in the past, but we'll continue to build on it, and it's not the end-all, be-all for sure.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate that. I, I know it's a long history and sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Dalton. I know you're catching up on a lot of that history. Um, I know we're all eager to, to see this wetlands issue fixed. Thank you.
Okay, do any other council members have questions? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand, so, um, let's hear from the public on this. Madam Clerk, is there anybody who wishes to speak from the public on this item?
Yes, we have one person, Wendy Leece. Oh, and another one too.
Okay, uh, Ms. Leece, you have the floor.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I appreciate, um, Councilwoman Reynolds' questions and, um, City Manager Lauranne Farrell Harrison's answers, uh, that we can just forget the past and chalk it up as experience and not dwell on the mistakes. Uh, one of the mistakes that cost quite a bit of money was, uh, the pump and the, um, the issue were, and, and the, the algae, and I guess we spent an extra close to four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in that, and that's in the report. So, um, I think as President of the Fairview Park Alliance, um, you know, we cut you a lot of slack, especially, you know, during COVID. Also, uh, there, there was a transition to a new, uh, new, not just to put the oversight of Fairview Park Administrator, but also the Park Director. So what we'd like to see is continuity, that there would be communication with endemic and the city on any issues of concern, rather than thinking the city's handling this or endemic. In other words, I like what Lauranne said. Um, also, those reports, I think they're monthly and, and annually. If those can be accessed by the public and, and then through, so that we don't have to do a public records request, and so that we can just know what is happening, rather than wait until the situation gets worse. Um, and, and also, I think, uh, we're kind of, because we're for preservation and restoration, uh, since we're starting over, we're going to, if we see something that is of concern to us, like I mentioned earlier this evening, just the, the overgrowth of the vegetation on the pass, if, if there are things, we will let you know, and we'll work with Kelly. And because we, we've wanted to be an enjoyable experience, a safe experience, and we know that there are a lot of things that, that, um, you know, I remember years ago when the, the whole project was planned, and, um, it's, it's a good project, but I know we have to work together to make it better. So we'll, we'll look forward to reading those monthly reports, and you'll hear from us if we see things that, uh, algae are, you know, just, uh, so that we're, it's a safe, uh, wonderful experience in nature. So thank you very much.
And the next speaker is Kim Hendricks.
Terrific.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I would like, uh, it, if the deliverables actually had the number of hours, because I know the 2017 contract had twenty hours, and they couldn't handle it, and so it was up to thirty hours a week and still wasn't handled properly, and this contract is so vague. Um, I'm concerned that, uh, it's not going to be handled again. Um, and also in the reports, I mean, I've done public records for the reports, and the monthly reports haven't been done um, on time, many, many, many times. It would be great if they could be done on time. Um, they could be posted without doing a public records request. Also, um, the annual, the grasslands, there's no grasslands down below. Um, he failed to meet the criteria. Um, there was never, the success criteria failed. There was never any, uh, help to do what you're supposed to do, replant anything. So please, keep endemic down at the man-made ponds. Okay, and let's work on an overall restoration plan with, uh, some specialists. I mean, he's a herpetologist. We need grassland specialists, vernal pool specialists. We have Tony Bonk Bomb Camp. So we really need to focus on specialists and through six hundred thousand dollars for two years? This is ridiculous. We don't even know how many reports. I feel that this endemic since 2013 has been ripping off the city, and the city's afraid of the agencies. And you know what? You don't have to be, because we're doing the right thing now. So let's get the right specialists. Let's get the overall restoration plan, and that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, do we have anyone else now?
No, no further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's close public comment and then, um, Council, Councilmember Reynolds, you still have your hand up. Oh, while it's up, do you want to make a motion or not? No? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion.
All right, there you go.
Oh, I didn't mean to, but I'm here. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll move that we approve staff recommendation, um, for this contract.
All right, Councilmember Chavez, would you like to second that?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, Councilmember Reynolds, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Um, yeah, I Fairview Park is a, a complicated place with a lot of different things going on, um, and I know we've had a, a variety of challenges, um, uh, sort of built into all of the agencies we have to work with there, um, uh, related to all of the different sort of sensitive, uh, species and habitats. Um, I think one thing that's been very frustrating in terms of costs at Fairview Park is how much it's costing us just to, um, meet sort of minimum mitigation requirements and just to sort of maintain the space, and a lot of the, the, those costs and that time has taken away from the, um, sort of overall visioning and restoration efforts for Fairview Park. So sort of my interest is, you know, keeping what we need to keep done, but being able to sort of get that in order to, to really move to the larger, um, uh, uh, visioning and restoration projects. Um, just a, a note, uh, as part of my role as our representative on the TCA Board, I've been able to, um, get to know some of their restoration team and take some, some tours. And I'm, I'm afraid to quote numbers because I'll get them wrong, um, but I remember just being baffled at how, um, uh, inexpensive it was to maintain properly restored land. So related to the amount that we're spending at Fairview Park to, to maintain some of these, you know, restored habitats or, or created habitats, um, it just seems way, way, way too high, um, based on what, what it should cost to maintain, um, properly restored habitats. So I'm, I'm really interested in, you know, getting to the planning about appropriate restoration, um, uh, so that hopefully down the line, it, it's a lot less expensive, um, to, uh, maintain really beautiful spaces at this park. Um, but in the meantime, I know we've got minimum requirements to meet, so, um, I, I support this contract to serve that role. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez, do you have any comments?
It's our diligence, the council, to preserve Fairview Park, and this does outside vote, yes.
All right, any other comments? Okay, I support, I just want to say I support the motion, and I really appreciate the perspective of, uh, your experience at TCA and, uh, bringing that into this discussion. I think that was good, Councilmember. I appreciate that. So anyway, let's call for the question.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Harlan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Timmar?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
And I just want to state that Councilmember Harper is absent.
All right, so we
Motion carries six zero, sorry.
Okay, good, that's the last item. Yeah, on that one too, if I could, uh, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could reflect in the minutes that Councilmember Harper left immediately after the last item of, was voted on. Okay, with that, um, does any council member, we're, we're done with our items on the agenda. Does any council member have anything that they want to add to their comments, anything that they forgot to say on the first go-round? Okay, if not, um, we'll adjourn the meeting for three, uh, of friends of Costa Mesa who passed away. Dave Gardner, um, Abe Jenkins, and my dear old mother, Mary Ann Stevens. So we're adjourned.